Good.
Good evening. Yonzo, thank you very much. Good evening and welcome to the regular meeting of the Madera City Council and special meeting of the Madera City Council as a groundwater sustainability agency. Tonight is Wednesday, April 3, 2024. It is now 6:00 PM. The Madera City Council meetings are open to the public. This meeting will also be available for public viewing and participation through Zoom. Members of the public may also observe the live stream meeting on the city's website at Members of the public may comment on agenda items at the meeting or remotely through an electronic meeting via phone by dialing 669-900-6833, enter ID 87105549385 hashtag. Comments will also be accepted via email at citycouncilpubliccomment@madera.gov or by regular mail at 205 West Fourth Street, Madera, California, 93637. I hereby call the regular meeting of the Madera City Council to order at 6:01. Zelda, would you please call the roll?
Mayor Garcia.
Here.
Mayor Protem Gallegos.
Here.
Councilmember Rodriguez. Absent Councilmember Montes.
Here. Actually, Mr. Rodriguez is a little bit late. He'll be here in about five minutes.
Thank you. Councilmember Evans.
Here.
Councilmember Mejia.
Here.
Councilmember Villegas.
Here.
We have Quam.
Allow me a moment, please. Would you all please rise for the invocation led tonight by Councilmember Anita Evans?
Blessings in this house. Blessings to each and every one of us. Thank you, Heavenly Father, as we gather here this afternoon. Blessing this town covering each and every one of us with the blood of your son, Jesus Christ, placing a hedge of protection around us, giving us the wisdom, the knowledge, and asking you to allow us to just bask in your glory, Father. We give you all the honor, the glory, and the praise for each and every one that's here on the council, in this chamber, and in this city. We thank you on this day in your son's precious name, Christ Jesus. Amen.
Pledge of allegiance will be led by Councilmember Steve Montes. Ready? Salute.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
If you could all please find a seat. There's a couple of seats up here. I'm gonna grab a couple of chairs also. I'll give you a moment. Ladies and gentlemen, brothers and sisters, we heard the sad news today that Mayor Andy Medellin's mother, who was also mayor of the city of Madera, Margaret Medellin, had passed away on Sunday. And so I would ask if you would please join the Madera City Council in a moment of sinus in her honor. Thank you very much. We will now move on to the approval of the agenda, but before that, I believe, Zelda, you have an announcement?
Regarding item B8, Jag Award, the exhibit to the Second Resolution was received after agenda distribution. The exhibit was sent to council. A copy has been put on their dais and a copy is available at the podium for the public.
Thank you very much. I will ask my colleagues if there are any questions or changes to the agenda?
I make a motion to approve the agenda.
Second.
Motion to approve the agenda by Councilwoman Evans, second by Councilmember Villegas. All those in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed? The ayes have it. Thank you very much. The record will show that Councilmember Rodriguez has joined us.
Thank you, Mayor.
Absolutely. We will now move on to public comment. The first 15 minutes of the meeting are reserved for members of the public to address the council on items which are within the subject matter jurisdiction of the council. Speakers shall be limited to three minutes. Speakers will be asked but are not required to identify themselves and state the subject of their comments. If this subject is an item on the agenda, the mayor has the option of asking the speaker to hold their comment until that item is called. Comments on items listed as a public hearing on the agenda should be held until the hearing is opened. The council is prohibited by law from taking any action on matters discussed that are not on the agenda, and no adverse conclusions should be drawn if the council does not respond to public comment at this time. Are any members of the public wishing to speak at this time under public comment?
Good evening, everyone. Good evening, Mayor and Council. My name is Kyle Savage. I'm the new field representative for Congressman John Duarte for the Madera in Fresno County. So for today's meeting, I just wanted to again, you know, say a good evening to everyone. I had a momental time attending the National Vietnam War Veterans Day Memorial Service on March 29 at Courthouse Park here in Madera. It was a beautiful service to commemorate the sacrifices of Vietnam veterans and their families. It was incredibly moving to hear from the speakers who spoke about their experience during the Vietnam War, along with the presentation of the race. The congressman would like to extend his sincere gratitude to American Legion Post 11 and VFW Post 1981 for all the hard work and dedication that they put into the National Vietnam War Veterans Day Memorial Service again here in Madera. The House recently passed the Consolidated Appropriations Act of 2004, HR 4366, which includes $26.34 million in funding of the congressman's request to meet critical constituent needs for building vital infrastructure to supporting local police departments. Congressman Duarte issued the following statement. "I am pleased to join a bipartisan group of Republicans and Democrats to pass legislation to form the federal government, to fund the federal government in the fiscal year 2024, that not only cuts government spending by $9 million while preserving critical programs, but also includes more than $26 million in funding our request to support critical local infrastructure, law enforcement, roads, and water projects in our district." Locally, Congressman Duarte was proud to advocate for $2 million in community project funding for the city of Madera. "Our office looks forward to hosting an official presentation with the city of Madera. This funding includes $1 million for the city of Madera Sewer Trunk Main Project. This funding will support the city of Madera's efforts to rehabilitate and replace up to 1.7 miles of sewer trunk main pipelines along Pecan Avenue from Granada Drive to State Route 99. The Pecan Avenue Sewer Main carries 40% of the sewer from the entire city and Madera Community College, as well as surrounding Madera County service areas of Parkwood and Parkstale to the local wastewater treatment plant. Proactive rehabilitation of the pipeline will come at a much lower cost, as well as preserve the integrity, health, and welfare of the city's residents. Also, the other $1 million for the city of Madera's storm drain pipeline replacement project. This funding will be used by the city of Madera to install approximately 10,600 linear feet of permanent underground storm drain pipelines, associated manholes, and stormwater inlets and outlets in the community. These pipelines are to be installed along Howard Avenue, Granada Avenue, and West Almond Avenue to reduce chronic flooding in the area. I thank you guys very much for your time."
Are there any other further public comments? Seeing none, Zelda, do we have any written or on Zoom comments by anyone?
Sorry. I see someone on Zoom. Guest with the last digits 7339. And let me check emails. No, I don't see anybody else.
So we might want to instruct that person how to unzoom or unmute themselves if they haven't, they might not know?
They didn't, they didn't have their, their hand up, so.
Okay, all right. Okay, well then we will close public comment and we will move on. Jill, would you bring the six recipients? Where's Jill?
Do you hear?
Yes. You made it. Good.
Would you like me to very much? There you go.
I'm serious. Okay. If you could help me distribute those, sure. So, on behalf of the Madera City Council, come here, come closer. These are, the following are proclamations from the Madera City Council in honor of National Sikh Day. And this in particular one states, whereas the Sikh community originating in Punjab and immigrating to the United States over a century ago has significantly contributed to the nation's development. And whereas Sikhism, the world's fifth largest religion, with nearly 30 million adherents boasts approximately 1 million followers residing in the United States alone. Guru Nanak founded Sikhism in the 15th century in the Punjab region of India, emphasizing the equality of all individuals before God, regardless of race, gender, or creed. Therefore, whereas it is entirely fitting and appropriate to celebrate Vaishiki alongside Sikhs worldwide and honor the enduring contributions made by the Sikh community in Madera to strengthen and inspire the people of the United States. Now therefore be it resolved that I Santos Garcia, Mayor of the city of Madera, and on behalf of the entire city council, do hereby proclaim April 14, 2024, as National Sikh Day. Yes?
On behalf of the American Sikhsangits, along with all other Sikh organizations, our Sikh community, we extend our deepest thanks to our respective council members, Honorable Mayor Santo Garcia, for the proclamation recognizing Wasaki as a National Sikh Day. The proclamation is not just a celebration of Wasaki. It is a celebration of the diversity that enriches our nation. It represents a profound acknowledgement of our community's history, contribution, and values. It is a symbol of the inclusivity and respect that our city extends to all its residents, regardless of their background. Let this be an opportunity for dialogue, understanding, and unity among all communities. As we celebrate Wasaki, let us take this opportunity to learn about the rich history, culture, and tradition of our Sikh community. Let us engage in dialogue, build bridges of understanding, and work together to create a strong, more harmonious community for everyone. I encourage everyone to participate in various events and activities throughout this month organized by the Sikh community to further deepen your knowledge about the Sikh heritage and culture. Let us embrace the value of equality, compassion, and service that are at the core of Sikhism and make them integral part of our own lives. Once again, thank you to the city councils and mayor for the proclamation, and we are excited to work hand in hand with the city to continue making it welcoming and inclusive place for all. Thank you very much.
How you doing?
Thank you.
Send it to my friendly candidate. We'll do that. Nice to see you again. Thank you.
Okay, who has a panoramic camera?
That's what we need.
Let's have the council members up front. If everybody can turn sideways, everybody turn sideways, sideways. Turn sideways. Everybody who has the proclamation, open it up and show it to the camera. We're gonna have to take a two-minute recess so we can reorganize here. Just two minutes.
Thank you. Very nice lesson.
That I announced.
So you want to announce that we don't have the proclamation? I already told you, next one, next meeting. No, you're fine.
It's okay. Peace for you.
Okay, we will now return to order. Item two under the proclamations, we will hold for our next meeting later on this month. There are no introductions. There are no workshops, just because. We will now move on to the consent calendar. Matters listed under the consent calendar are considered routine and will be enacted by one motion and one vote. There will be no separate discussion of these items. If discussion is desired, a member of the public or a member of the council may request an item be removed from the consent calendar, and it will be considered separately. Are there any members of the public wishing to speak regarding the consent calendar? Zelda, do we have any written or Zoom comments on the consent calendar?
There's none, Mayor.
Thank you. I will now close public comments on this item. I will now ask for discussion and/or a motion from my colleagues.
I still move to approve the consent as presented. Second.
Motion to approve the consent calendar by Mayor Protem Gallegos, second by Councilmember Villegas. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The ayes have it. Thank you very much. We will now move on to public hearings. Item C1 is a public hearing on the Community Development Block Grant, CDBG, 2024-2025 Annual Action Plan Funding allocations. Stella, do you have this?
I do, Mayor.
Welcome.
See here. My presentation. Oh, did you? No, I have the CDBG. It might have. So, yeah, I always forget. Drag it to, drag this. Oh. Don't I have to just do that whole thing down here? Yeah, there we go. Okay. Good evening, Mayor. Let's see if I can move this. I don't know what this is. Not sure how to get this out of the way. Try it again. This one. Yeah, right, this one. Yeah, there we go. I just, I don't know where I have it.
It's not sharing online.
It's not sharing online?
No, that's my computer, so.
This one, right?
Yeah, that one.
Yeah. Yeah. Projector screen. Somehow there is. Did I tell you? There we go. There we go.
You're done.
Okay. Okay, sorry about that. Okay. All right. Good evening, Mayor and council members. Tonight I am presenting on the 2024-2025 CDBG annual allocation. So it's a public hearing for the CDBG 2024-2025 Annual Action Plan Proposed Funding allocations. So a little bit of background on this item. The U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development annually allocates CDBG funding to jurisdictions. HUD has not yet announced the 2024-25 CDBG funding allocations. HUD advises grantees that the change in the upcoming allocation may fluctuate plus or minus 10% of the current year's allocation. Therefore, for purposes of preparing the 2024-25 Annual Action Plan timely, the city is using the current allocation of $981,730. The city utilizes a block grant commission to consider the applications, hear testimony, and make recommendations regarding the city's CDBG allocation. HUD requires a 30-day public comment period after approving tentative allocations. Upon the expiration of the comment period, staff will present the proposed allocations to council in May 2024 for final approval. So the objectives of the public hearing. It allows council to consider the block grant commission annual action plan funding proposals. It provides an opportunity for the public to provide council with comments on the funding proposals. It also allows council the opportunity to approve the tentative funding allocations for the 2024-25 Annual Action Plan. So as a reminder, these are the CDBG funding objectives. HUD established three national objectives for the CDBG program. The first is to benefit low and moderate income persons, or aid in the prevention or elimination of slums or blight. Or the third one is to meet a need having any particular urgency referred to as an urgent need. Projects must meet at minimum one of these objectives. HUD also requires identification of primary and secondary tier local funding priorities. The city identifies these local priorities in the 2020-2024 Consolidated Action Plan. The primary objectives are quality housing and homelessness. The second tier priorities are neighborhood revitalization, which includes capital and public improvement projects. So these are the eligible funding categories and the maximum funding allowed per funding category. The first is administration. The city is allowed, or grantees are allowed, to utilize 20% of the current year's allocation toward administration projects. That this year, that number would equal 196,346. The public service funding category has allowed 15% allocation of the current year's entitlement. That would equal, that equals to $147,259. In the last funding category, which is a capital projects, public improvements, there is no cap on that funding category. In the last funding category, which is a capital projects, public improvements, there is no cap on that funding category. It, in essence, is remaining part of the entitlement. This chart reflects the requested grant funding by the applicants that we received this year. We received two grant proposals under the administration funding category. Again, the maximum that can be allocated is $196,346 and the amount requested is $216,400. Under the public service funding category, we received a total of nine proposals. Again, the maximum to be allocated is $147,259. The total amount requested was $466,186. Under the capital projects, public improvement funding category, one application was received. The maximum allocation amount is $638,125. The application was in the amount of $650,000. This chart reflects the recommendations from the block grant commission for the administration funding category. The two applications received were, the first was on behalf of the city of Madera to administer and provide oversight to the CDBG program. The requested amount is $196,346. The recommendation is $176,346. The second application was submitted from Community Action Partnership in Madera County for the Fresno-Madera Continuum of Care Point-in-Time Count Administration. The amount requested is $20,000. The recommendation is also for $20,000. These are the recommended public service allocations. Again, we received nine applications. The first is for, the first application was on behalf of Madera Coalition for Community Justice, their youth environmental stewardship project. The amount requested was $28,800. The block grant commission did not recommend funding this project. The second application was also on behalf of the Madera Coalition for Community Justice. It's a utility shut-off project. The amount requested was in the amount of $36,000. The block grant commission did not propose funding this project. The third came from Pequenos Empresarios, Child Entrepreneurship Education Project. The requested amount was $56,286. The block grant commission did not recommend funding this program. The fourth application is Madera Project Run, Madera Project Run project. The requested amount was for $38,500. The block grant did not recommend funding this project. Madera Rescue Mission also submitted an application for homeless prevention and services. The requested amount was $62,800. The block grant recommends a funding amount of $54,000. The Olive Charitable Organization for the Bennett House, the amount requested is for $40,000 and the recommendation is for $40,000. Community Action Partnership Housing Stabilization Program, the amount requested is $57,300 and the block grant recommended funding $33,259. Madera County Work, Madera County Workforce In Home Childcare Project, the amount requested is for $66,500 and the block grant commission did not recommend funding for this project. The City Parks Department, Madera Seniors Nutrition and Recreation Project, the requested $80,000 and the block grant recommendation is for $20,000. Here again, we, the city received one application under the Capital Projects Public Improvements allocation and the application was on behalf of the city's engineering department for community and park facilities parking lot surface rehabilitation project. The, the project proposes rehabilitating five different parking lots within the community, including the Pan American Center, Gateway Rotary, Sunrise Rotary, John W. Wells Youth Center, and the Frank Bergon Senior Center. The requested amount is $650,000 and the recommendation is $638,125. Once HUD announces a 2024-25 final allocation, staff will update the proposals as directed. The administration and public service funding categories will be updated according to the HUD mandated caps, funding caps. Staff will adjust administration allocation according to the 20% cap and the public service allocation according to the 15% cap of the annual year's allocation. Again, there is, there is not a cap for the capital public improvements funding category, but the total, the remaining balance will also be updated. The block grant commission suggested the following proposal related to the public service allocation. If the 2024-25 allocation exceeds the current year's allocation, the block grant commission proposed allocating the difference, the Parks Department Senior Services Project. If the 2024-25 allocation does not exceed this year's allocation, the block grant commission proposed evenly distributing the difference to the funded projects. So the action plan has a public review and comment period with council approval of the tentative 2024-25 CDBG Annual Action Plan Funding allocations. A 30-day public review and comment period will begin today, April 3, 2024. The CDBG Annual Action Plan is available upon request. It can also be found on the city's website and there is a link to the website. All interested parties are invited to provide comments to the city for consideration before finalizing the CDBG Annual Action Plan. Public comments can be provided in writing by mail at 205 West Fourth Street, Madera, California, 93637, or by email at citycouncilpubliccomments@modera.gov. The public review and comment period will expire on May 3, 2024 at 5:00 p.m. So next steps are for, to request for council to open the public hearing. Request that council review and approve the tentative CDBG 2024-25 Annual Action Plan Funding Recommendations. Staff will bring any public comments received to the May 15, 2024 council meeting for consideration. Request that council consider any public comments and approve the final 2025, 2024-25 CDBG Annual Action Plan during the May 15, 2024 meeting. Upon final council approval, staff will submit the 2024-25 Annual Action Plan to HUD. That concludes my presentation.
Thank you much. We will now open this public hearing regarding the Community Development Block Grant. Are there any members, are there any members of the public wishing to speak on this item?
Good evening, mayor, city council. D.J. Becker from the Block Grant Commission. It's not that we didn't want to fund some of these programs and applications. It's we didn't have enough funding to do so. Before you are our recommendations and as always, there's twice the need as funding is available. They're all worthy projects and we had to make some very difficult decisions. We also did not have adequate reporting or receipts on some applicants and we didn't know the actual amount of the, of the award. We do expect the HUD award to be close to the projected amount. First, some good news, if I can find my slides. I got it. Look at there. There it is. It's not coming up.
No, it's not coming up. You might have to try something.
Do something wrong? There it is. Okay. First.
People online can't see it. So let me.
You're the tech expert. I'll just go ahead and keep. Yeah, I can. Wait. First, some good news on the previous block grant programs. The Department of Public Works is making some awesome strides with the 500,000 sidewalk repair and previous infill work on the east sides. These photos are from the 200 block of B Streets. Residents were actually in disbelief and so very appreciative. This project is changing lives, especially for seniors and the disabled. There's the other one. During our most recent block grant meetings, and there were several, let me back this up. How do I get to those other ones here? No. Zelda, could you help me find those others, please?
Is he right here?
We decided to prioritize the needs of our most struggling residents. Got it. Okay, that's good. That's good. Our most struggling residents, the unstable population requiring mental health assistance and those who are being sexually trafficked right here in Madera. There we go. During these meetings.
Yeah, D.J. Did you start the three-minute? Okay, we're gonna have to hold these to three minutes. We were kind of.
Public hearing, mayor, not public comment.
Well, this is your public comment. This is under public comment now.
So during these, I'll talk faster. During these meetings, we reviewed the application objectives, budgets, and pointed to some other, others to readily available corporate funding sources. I'd like to introduce you to Brandon. A young man I noticed walking down Gateway near Ninth Street on February 23 of this year. It was chilly. He was barefoot, wrapped only in a light sheet or blanket. I couldn't believe my eyes and did a double take and a U-turn only because I had some familiarity with human trafficking through Olive.
D.J., I'm gonna have to ask you to cut your comments if you could. Thank you. I'd like to remind everybody, under public comment, we're allowed three minutes. Thank you very much.
Mayor, isn't this a here, could we have a point of order? Isn't this a public hearing?
But you are still under public comment in the public hearing. Thank you. Is there any other public comments regarding CDBG? And remember, we're gonna be back again in another meeting. You come up to the podium if you have a question, please, or if you have a comment. No. If you wanna give three minutes of your time, yes, that's allowed.
Mr. Mayor. Just as a kind of a reminder, you're typically not allowed to transfer time over unless from one person to another, because that prevents somebody from getting up for 15 minutes and stacking the conversation.
So can we allow?
The person who wants to speak can and it can be up to three minutes. So if they wanna come up and talk themselves rather than trying to defer it to someone else.
Okay.
We're not under those rules. Sorry about that.
No, no, that's fine. Just, this, this is why we asked for clarification and I wanna make sure we get this right. So would you wanna speak under this issue? Well, you have to actually come to the podium if you're going to. Okay, thank you very much. Is there anyone else wishing to put, speak under public comment? Is there anyone else wishing to speak under public comment on this item? Seeing none. Hold on a second. Hold on a second. Zelda, are there any written or Zoom communications regarding the CDBG?
There are none.
Okay. Then we'll close public comment and bring it back to my colleagues for questions and or comments. Councilmember Rodriguez.
Mr. Mayor, before you close that public comment, I just wanted to confirm that the lady that was presenting earlier, did she get her allotted three minutes?
More than the three minutes.
I just wasn't sure if we didn't have a timer. Was someone timing that? Okay. So are we not using our timer anymore?
We are using our timer.
I don't see it here.
Excuse me, when hers were pictures as opposed to a PowerPoint. So when that happened, I wasn't able to see the option on the screen.
I see. Okay, thank you for clarifying it. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Councilwoman Evans.
At this time, are we going to actually vote on the numbers that we have here or no? Are we speaking on that?
If I may, mayor. Right now, the council is giving preliminary direction as what it would like to propose. Once that proposal goes out, in 30 days from now, there'll be a public opportunity review period and then it'll come back to you for final adoption. So unless there's another process out there that I'm not aware of, this is, this is, there's gonna be a second bite at the apple. There's gonna be additional public hearings and comment opportunities. This is just a preliminary proposal.
Could, could you put up that screen again for the May date, that, that date in May?
When, when we're returning to council? It's the May 15 council meeting. So we'll bring back whatever is recommended tonight for, for funding. We'll bring that back because we have to, we have to allow 30 days for the public to comment on whatever is a tentative proposal for the 2025, 2024-25 funding allocation from HUD.
Through the mayor, Councilwoman Evans, that doesn't mean you can't make changes tonight. If you want to adjust things tonight, you can do that. It's just, it's not final.
Okay.
Thank you.
So sir, I would like to speak in reference to this, the fact that there's $147,000 that's been allocated. And instead of blanketing certain charities, we need to try, to me personally, I would like to distribute it a little bit more evenly. The rescue mission, I see here there's $54,000 that has been allocated or at least proposed. If we look on our agenda and go to D1, there will be money that's going to be allotted to the rescue mission. So with that right there, that will, we could take that and actually spread it apart. The Olive House, I understand that there's desperate need there, but they also receive a lot of funds throughout the year. We have entities here that are public and also private and the funds could be spread it more, in my opinion. As far as the Parks Department is concerned, we were asked for $80,000 and there's only $20,000 showing to be allotted there. There's a lot of left to be done throughout the park system. And my personal opinion is those funds could also be elevated. I'm looking also at Project Run Madera where there are hundreds of children that are being helped each and every day. There are things that are be given to them and also instead of something that is helpful to our youth, to give them a zero, why not try and at least try to help them out as well? The utility shut-off? I don't have much to say about that, but those are the, the entities that I'm speaking on right now that I would like to see some adjustments done as, in reference to the fact of the zeros and how heavy these other entities are being awarded. So that's my opinion.
Thank you. Mayor Protem Gallegos.
Thank you, Mayor Garcia. Marcela, can you put up the spreadsheet, please, of the activity type of public service? And I would like to first off, thank the CDBG committee on coming up with these numbers. I agree with Councilwoman Evans on some of the allocations such as utility shut-off. We just received a $1.2 million grant. She did mention the D1 that we're approving for the rescue mission. We also have Madera County Work, Workforce In Home Care that serves approximately eight families for $65,000 to me was a big spread. So this is what I am projecting and I would like my colleagues to kind of chime in is I would say $5,000 to Madera Coalition of Community Justice. And we, as Councilwoman Evans said, spread it around. $10,000 to Pequenos Imperios, $10,000 to Project Run, $10,000 to Olive. HUD really looks at housing and sales, still just, still, sorry, stabilization for CAPMC $47,259. And then the senior nutrition program that serves so many seniors in this whole city and county, $65,000. And that would give us $147,259. And I feel that it was spread to every organization fairly, in my opinion. When I looked at the numbers, I looked at the applications, I looked at all of that and came up with that.
Councilwoman Gallegos, I'm sorry, can you?
Did I say it too fast?
I just, I had a mishap on my.
Sorry. You know, I talk fast.
Which, which, there are two projects for the coalition. Which one are you proposing?
The youth.
The youth.
The first one.
Five thousand? Okay.
And then Olive.
I got.
$10,000.
So we're, this is the homeless, the mission we're leaving at zero.
Because we're giving them $4,200, $422,000, sorry.
Okay, Olive is $10,000.
$10,000. CAPMC $47,259.
65 for senior.
And.
5 for senior.
Parks and Rec Senior Nutrition, 65,000.
There you go. Got it. Thank you.
Did you also mention in-home childcare?
No, they have, they get other grants. Madera County Workforce gets other grants. I looked into, and it is serving, if I'm not mistaken, eight families for that in care. And for 68,000, that is, or 66,000, that was a lot to be asking for. So I left that zeroed out. That was my reasoning behind that.
Are you done?
I'm done. Thank you.
All right, Councilwoman Mejia, because I got Councilwoman Mejia over here, so.
Thank you, Mayor. Yeah, I thank you for this presentation. I, it was disheartening for me to see 000 next to so many wonderful community organizations that are doing so much. Just off the top of my head, Project Run, helping low-income athletes be able to afford and participate. I was like, when I was a child, had it not been for projects like that, I wouldn't have, I would have not been able to participate, I think, especially after the pandemic and then the inflation that we're living. It's very, very important to try to support the youth in our community. So happy to see us moving in a direction that would help more of our youth. The, the Youth Coalition, I was part of that. Madera Youth Leaders, so definitely in support of our youth. I've actually been to several presentations by Pequenos Empresas in the last couple of months. And Councilwoman Gallegos, I know, would agree that the work that they do, it's great. And they're not only helping young children, but now they're doing empowerment for parents, for adults in our community. And we have witnessed, we've heard the testimony that people in our community have given about these transformational programs that they're working on. So I would be in support in the direction that Councilwoman Gallegos is taking as far as the proposed numbers. Thank you, Mayor.
Councilmember Montes?
Yeah, I would be in agreement. One of the things that I look at too is available funding from other sources. And I don't know if that $400,000 for the PLHA, which we're, which is gonna be next.
Councilmember Montes, that was not brought up only because we hadn't brought it to council yet for our final approval. So that was why.
So that could have been.
Potentially.
Didn't happen. But yeah, again, I'm looking at the other potential funding sources. So I would be in agreement as well. All, every, you know, I do appreciate the work that the commission puts in, the applications that we get, all these, I wish we had more money. I wish we had the ability to fund everything, but can't. So we do have to make some, some decisions. And, you know, and maybe if there's something else that we can do to direct people to get those other funds. And I've reached out to individuals as well, say, hey, look, this is another funding source, or this is another way to get your project funded. We'd appreciate that. And, you know, full disclosure, I am on CAPMC appointed by this board. So I do see a lot of work that they do. And so, again, I would be in agreement and supportive of the recommendations that Councilwoman Gallegos made.
Councilmember Rodriguez.
Yes, thank you, Mayor. You know, I too feel like a lot of these organizations that, that are from startup, you know, require a little bit more investment. And I do appreciate that Project Run Madera, Pequenos Empresas, and just to meet the national objectives of HUD, you know, we're trying to keep in line with that. But that's to benefit the low and moderate income aid in prevention of, or elimination of slums and blind and/or media having a particular urgency. I know that there's priorities there with the focus on housing. But I'm surprised that the Madera Coalition for Community Justice Utility Shut Off is not considered in this case. So if I was to propose is to maybe add, add $10,000 there, remove those from the Community Action Partnership so that we too can, can, can help and allocate some funds there. I think the other youth environmental stewardship, that, that could certainly use an additional $5,000. So I'm not sure if my colleagues would agree to spread it a little bit more evenly and maybe take another $5,000 from the Community Action Partnership and make that 10,000 as well. Because I think at the end of the day, what we're trying to do is trying to make sure that we, we meet that public service. Last year's allocation is no different than this year's. I'm assuming that that's what we're doing because we haven't received a number yet, right? So we're assuming that 147,000. So if you look at last year's Community Block Grant, it was spread more evenly than what we have today. And I understand the priorities with the homelessness rescue mission, of course. They're getting their, their money through a different source of money, through the community housing development, not necessarily HUD. HUD's priorities are that we allocate monies towards the, again, homelessness and then stuff like that. But I think if, if, if what my colleague says that we're, that they're getting over $400,000, again, being from a different pot of money through the state, not necessarily through the federal, does that, do we go against HUD's mission there? Because we're not allocating any money from HUD specifically for the rescue mission. Although we're doing it from the state's pot. HUD's objectives, again, are to meet these priorities. I, I, I still feel that if there's, that's questionable. I'm not sure if, if we need to allocate any funds there as well because, again, the state's already supplementing that, the area.
All of the, all of the applications are CDBG eligible applications. And so they fit within the, within HUD's guidelines. It just, the tiers were the local level tiers. And that was established, I don't know, maybe 2019 to, for the 2020, 2024 Consolidated Action Plan on behalf of the City of Madera. And those were the, the, that was, that was the findings back, back in 2019, 2018, 2019. But Councilmember Rodriguez, to answer your question, all of these do, the requirement, HUD's requirement is that they must meet at least one of the national objectives. These all meet the low, moderate income national objective on behalf from, from, as required by HUD.
Yeah, and if my colleagues, you know, I, I too, I'm a big supporter of the Community Action Partnership. So I know that that's big, taking away from, then obviously takes away from other services that they provide. If the seniors nutrition or the cities, City Madera, if we can supplement that through something else, through the city grants or something, then, you know, I'd love to see those funds allocated to, to the Community Action Partnership. But I'm not sure if this format would suffice or, I'd like to hear any other comments at the time.
Oh, next is Councilmember Villegas.
Yeah, I was thinking, why now we giving to the Madera County Workforce and the home childcare, also the, under our rescue mission program. But Mr. Rodriguez clarified, they're getting money for these different sources of different, in different ways. So I agree with the, the way it's looking right now. As, as the best we can, I guess.
I think we have a hand up on Zoom from Candy Tally, Commissioner Candy Tally.
So we're under, we're not under public comment right now. We're the, the, the city council is deliberating. Councilwoman Evans, would you allow me a comment before I acknowledge your mind? That way I can get a chime in. The only change that I would make, and I, and I appreciate my colleagues for coming up numbers because that gives me a chance to not have to, to do all the numbers things right now. The only change that I would make is I would take $10,000 from the City Parks Department, and I would provide that back to the Olive House. I firmly believe that they are deserving of it. And 65,000 is a good amount of change. And I don't think that they will be considerably hurt if we remove 10,000 from that. So I'd like to take that 65 and make it a 55 and give it to another 10,000 to the Olive House. And other than that, I think all of my colleagues have made really good points. And I appreciate their efforts in looking at this. Again, this is just one meeting that we're having. We're kicking out our ideas, our comments, and we will have another bite at the apple, as Shannon mentioned. Councilwoman Evans.
No, I'll just, I'll go with this.
Okay. Mayor Protem Gallegos.
So the question I have is, before, we've done it by each council member so that we can see what each council member is saying. And right now, it's being changed every time somebody chimes in. So it's very hard to see what I propose and then Mayor Garcia, Councilwoman Evans, Councilwoman. So again, I'm, that's why it's hard when we don't have the columns for individual council members. Because for me, I look at the $1.2 million grant on utility shut off. So that's why I had said zero at the time. And now it's at 10,000. And I would put that back at CAPMC.
Okay, do we want to consider this one first? And then I can, if it's not.
You changed it when I said it, so I'm asking for it to be changed now.
Okay.
Can we get a printout of this before we make too many changes or just kind of maintain now?
Mr. Mayor, what may work is if, if there is a motion for that. And, I mean, we can certainly follow it through, through us deliberating here if, if folks.
Then I'd like to change it and make that motion.
You can certainly change it. And then at that moment, if that's what most of the majority of the council feel, that's fine.
I believe what Camira Protem Gallegos is asking, is requesting, is we add additional columns to the right. We identify a council member, we identify every number, and there's deliberation via that method.
Correct.
Okay, thank you. Yeah, I hope we just had columns put into them. Yeah, so we'll do it right now.
Right, I think for now, if you have, if you have a motion and then we can't get to a resolution, then maybe we do the columns. But if you have, it sounds like there's only like two motions that would have come up, right? So maybe we just take.
Okay, we could just do that if you can go back to what it was.
If I'm not aboard.
No, no, no. I, I want to be able to streamline this too.
So zero for the utilities and put that.
Oh, this was at five, I'm sorry.
That's the.
Why don't we leave that one as it was right now? And then we just make another column, and then we can label it as, as first or second as you want. That way we don't have to change all these numbers back and forth.
We should have done that at the beginning.
This one would have been the first.
This one right here?
Yeah, so the one that, the one that Councilwoman Gallegos is saying would have been the first.
Are you looking at the wrong one?
Yeah, so. So this is what they did in this.
Oh, okay. Okay, the second one would be the one that we were just looking at.
I'll just do all three of them.
Isn't it technology wonderful? Is it doing this by hand?
Back up to the area at the top and just hit back.
So you can just leave that at zero and add that back to the CAPMC. There's another, because at the, CAPMC had a total of 47,259. Is that correct?
That's correct.
Oh, at the beginning.
Just sort of been zero, this would have been zero though for the.
And then the Olive Foundation, I think, or.
That's where it's at. 40,000 showing here.
That's where it's at.
The mayor, if I may.
Yeah.
I believe in council, or Mayor Protem, if you could correct me what I'm wrong. Your original proposal was 5,000 for the Madera Coalition, 10,000 for the Pequenos Empresas. I mispronounced it, but 10,000 for Project Run, nothing for Madera Mission. Rescue Mission is being addressed and otherwise. 10,000 for Olive, 47,259 for CAP, and $65,000 for Parks.
So, but I'd like to change that because my colleagues want to give the Youth Coalition 10.
Okay. Now, in which case, where is the 10 coming from?
And we'll just leave it then. I can just leave it.
So it's correct how it is up on the screen.
Yes, that's fine.
Well, this is CC.
In which case, if you wanted to, you could make the motion now and then see if there's enough votes, in which case it's resolved. And if it's not, it could go to another proposal or modified proposal.
So then I'll motion the 4224 council column. Be put in place that I suggested.
I'll second it.
So, okay. Column, City Council tentative 402, is that what we're looking at?
Yes.
Okay.
Can the other one be filled in so we could see the difference?
Yeah, really.
So we want to see the second one prior to voting. So if you can do that one.
Do you have a motion now?
Yeah.
So he was.
You can, you can, you can say no, and then we can always come back to it. You can always, it's, the vote's already.
Okay. All right, so as, as Councilmember Rodriguez has stated several times now, we can make this, we can undertake this first motion under this 147, 259. And it can need, if it's defeated, then we can go on to the other one. So the motion by Mayor Protem Gallegos, second by Councilmember Montes, to pass the first column, all those in favor, say aye.
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 All those against?
No.
No.
Okay, so we'll take a roll call vote then.
Mayor Protem Gallegos?
Yes.
Councilmember Rodriguez?
No.
Councilmember Montes?
Yes.
Councilmember Evans?
No.
Councilmember Mejia?
Yes.
Councilmember Villegas?
Yes.
Mayor Garcia?
No. The ayes have it?
Yeah, that's a four, three.
Okay, move to the next section. So the ayes have it, we'll move forward and we'll go on to the next section?
So the administration allocations, there were two.
What, did, did we skip that one originally?
We didn't vote on it.
No, yeah, we started with public service, so.
Okay, all right.
Sorry.
So can I move to accept the block grant commission's allocation?
For administration.
For administration.
Second.
So is there any discussion prior to that? So there's a motion to approve by Councilmember Montes, second by Mayor Protem Gallegos. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
And the opposed? The ayes have it, so the administration proposal is accepted.
And the final one is the capital project, public improvement allocation.
And the balance is at 638, right? So that wasn't the maximum, but that is, if we maxed out the other ones, that would be the maximum. So I'll move to approve the block.
I just have a question on that one, the public improvement one. I was wondering what would be possible to include the Mountain Vista parking lot?
The one in the ground.
Yeah, so there's, oh, it has to be in there.
Has to be in there.
Yeah, it was in the application that was submitted. But they were, we're in the public comment period then.
Yeah, so Mountain Vista. Can just be sure we're all talking about the same parking lot, I believe.
Millview, Mountain Vista.
I still refer to it as Sugar Pine, but that's because I'm old and I've been in Madera my whole life. And it used to be called Sugar Pine.
Old school.
And so the Mountain Vista parking lot, my understanding is the one that we submitted was for this parking lot right here, is that correct, Joe? Did it include the Mountain Vista? And I believe Councilmember Mejia is talking about this one right here, right?
Yes, that's correct. That being Madera Unified?
I'm trying to recall, was that? I do not believe, I'm, I'm not confident if that part was included. Definitely the northern, the larger of the parking lots was included. I would have to do a little research on this one. And the reason I say I have to do a little research is CAPMC leases a part of this building and Madera Unified School District leases a part of this parking lot. So it's city-owned, but we have sublease agreements. And then the city uses it for, we use the gym for adult basketball. So we will have to do a little bit of research to see if there's any legal obligations from either CAPMC or Madera Unified for parking lot maintenance. With that being said, we can definitely come back to council, provide an update to let council know where we're at with everything.
Okay.
If, before I misspeak, I'll also put out there, though, there is skills of economy whenever we're doing larger projects like this. And it may be beneficial to include something like that. However, if, if, if the CDBG project cannot fund it, we could potentially identify other funding sources or move this to a future CDBG fiscal year. So we can definitely explore it. If we are in the project application, though, I think we can probably take a look at it to see if it could potentially be included. There's some HUD rules that I'm definitely not the subject matter expert on, and they get confusing really fast because there's a lot of them. But we can definitely take a look at that. But the parking lot that is included as part of this application is the northern, I'll call it the northern large parking lot here, here on the screen, and not the smaller one here on the south and to the west of it. Hopefully that clarifies which parking lot we're talking about.
Yes, it does. Thank you.
So we're trying to remember where we were at.
We had a motion.
Mr. Mayor, I think there was a motion by Councilmember Montes.
I was about to, but I stopped. Are we good?
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Okay, so the motion was to approve the block grant commission's, um, allocation for cap project.
Yeah. Motion by Councilmember Montes, second by Councilwoman Evans, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The ayes have it. Thank you very much, Marcella.
Thank you.
It's rather complicated, but we got through it.
Getting better every time.
Okay, um, here we go, we're done with item C one. We will now move on to item D petitions, bids, resolutions, ordinances and agreements. Item D one is a permanent local housing allocation twenty two thousand twenty nineteen and agreement with the Madera Rescue Mission for homeless emergency shelter services. Marcella, you also have this item?
Yes, Mayor, I do. Okay, so this item is for the permanent local housing allocation program, uh, twenty nineteen in agreement with the Madera Rescue Mission. Hang on one second, I'm sorry, let me go back to. Let me just restart it. Hang on a second, so. I did, I just think I didn't expand it over here correctly. Sorry about that. Oh, wrong ones. Okay. Can you see it online?
Yes, thank you, yes.
Okay. Governor Brown signed the Building Homes and Jobs Act Senate Bill SB two into law in two thousand seventeen. The goal is to provide a permanent funding source to local governments for housing related programs. SB two established a fee of seventy five dollars each time a property is recorded with the county assessor. The city's an entitlement jurisdiction. The state of California's Department of Housing and Community Development estimated the city's allocation over five years between twenty nineteen and twenty twenty three totaled two, just over two point five million from revenue collected and deposited into the PLHA fund beginning in calendar year twenty nineteen. Steph prepared the PLHA application that included a five year plan for the twenty nineteen, twenty twenty three funding cycle. The five year plan proposed funding for two core purposes. The first one was to provide services to homeless individuals and those at risk of homelessness. And the second was a development and rehabilitation of affordable rental housing. The five year plan allocates the twenty nineteen PLHA funding towards the operational costs for a homeless emergency shelter. Council approved the submission of the PLHA application to HCD on November sixteenth, twenty twenty two. The PLHA agreement in the amount of four hundred and twenty two thousand three hundred and nineteen between the city of Madera and HCD was executed on May seventeenth, twenty twenty three. So eligible uses for this allocation, um, is allocated towards the operational costs at the rescue mission for homeless emergency shelter as outlined in the PLHA plan. Support services include, but they are not limited to, operational costs of implementing and managing an emergency shelter, including case management, payroll expenses, utilities, supplies. The grant does allow up to twenty one thousand one hundred and fifteen dollars and ninety five cents for administrative costs. Tonight's recommendation is for council to adopt a resolution approving the permanent local housing allocation program, twenty nineteen allocation for four hundred and twenty two thousand three hundred and nineteen and approving an agreement with the Madera Rescue Mission for the operational costs of the homeless emergency shelter for four hundred and one thousand two hundred and two dollars and five cents. That concludes my presentation.
Thank you very much. Do we have any members of the public wishing to comment on item D one?
Good evening, council. My name is Jesse Chavez, I'm the executive director of the Madera Rescue Mission. This is Leah Pacheco, uh, she's our accountant. First, thank you, Mayor Santos and city council members for this opportunity. We at the Madera Rescue Mission appreciate the opportunity to apply for the permanent local housing allocation grant. The Madera Rescue Mission has been serving the Madera community for approximately thirty seven years, serving our homeless community, which we call guests, our overnight guests. And we are also pet, uh, pet friendly. Uh, in our application, you can see how we plan to use the funds. I, I promise to be a good steward of these funds. Uh, we serve over one hundred guests every night and our equipment and facilities are used every night, twenty four seven. This grant will help us upgrade necessary equipment and improve facilities so we can keep serving our guests, as you can imagine. I have included in the plan the case manager worker. We have found that the case manager or worker is critical in helping our guests to come out of that, uh, threat or those issues that they're in. We, we gain their trust, uh, and then we give them hope of, uh, finding, uh, short term or long term housing. One of the highest priorities we have is safety, uh, for, for all of our guests on campus. So that's why we've included some monies for, uh, security, um, actual, uh, we use Zach Security. That way the guests feel safe. With all the grants and contracts, there is, um, also some administration, so we have some, uh, fees in there for administration. Again, we're so grateful that the city of Madera has offered us the opportunity for this grant and really to serve those that are most vulnerable these days. But rest assured, Madera Rescue Mission knows their struggles and we know the solutions for them. Finally, thank you, uh, Marcella and Liliana for helping us with the application and looking on our needs. Also, Arnaldo, uh, for your support. I think he mentioned to this, this grant to me about two years ago. He says it's going to come around, I go, okay, just keep, keep us in mind. So, you know, we're about helping people, right? Everybody knows that and, and we know what the hope is, right? And, uh, we're just so thankful and grateful if you would, uh, give us this grant, it will really go a long ways. Any questions?
Thank you.
Okay.
Any further comment, further comment on this item? Zelda, do we have any comments regarding this item? Uh, either on Zoom or in written form?
I don't see either on a Zoom or, um, phone.
Thank you. So then we will close public comment and bring it back for discussion and a motion from my colleagues. Councilmember Montes.
Oh, yeah, thank you, Mayor, um, thanking myself for this, this, um, item and thank you to the rescue commission for applying something that I think is greatly needed. My question is though, uh, you know, we just had this conversation on the previous item about this item. So what was our process for, um, you know, promoting applicants to reach out? Did we do enough or did we do an RFP? Or did we just go and kind of usual suspects and say, hey, these funds are available?
For this particular item, we wrote into the five year, um, PLHA plan that was submitted into HCD and that, um, that met the requirement on behalf of HCD in terms of public comment, public caring and whatnot. I did ask prior to, um, moving forward with, um, proposing an agreement between the city and the Madera Rescue Mission. Um, I did ask our HCD rip and he said that did comply. The, um, we did not, we didn't, because the service isn't directly to the city. It was in an RFP process as others are, so, and so that's why we didn't, um, go in that direction. Plus, again, we had included this in the PLHA application when we submitted it. It was part of our five year plan to, to award it.
Okay, so all five year allocations would be to, or just the first?
Correct, just the first.
So is that something that we're planning? I'm not, I'm not trying to say that the rescue mission is not doing great work.
Right.
But this is about almost three times what the CDBG allocation was. And there, in my opinion, and maybe I'm wrong, would, would Olive even be a qualified applicant or a recipient for some of these monies? I mean, I know they're not, it's not emergency or shelter, right?
Right.
But it is kind of in the same, you know, um, I guess.
I would have to review the guidelines, they were, they were pretty specific in what the emergency, it was like an emergency shelter. Yeah, it was an emergency shelter, hence why we moved in that direction and wrote it into the plan.
Okay, all right, that, that was my question, so that, that does answer. So again, I'm not trying to take away from the rescue commission, saying they're not a deserving, uh, recipient. It just, you know, if that was something that we could do, I would like to start to look into it. But if it's not, and again, it has some weird rules sometimes, and so. Sometimes, yeah, we like them, keep sending the money, but, um, you know, we don't want to run afoul of that. But also want to explore all the options, right?
Correct, yes.
Those are my questions, thank you.
Councilmember Rodriguez.
Uh, yes, thank you, Mayor. I, I do want to just to, um, reiterate that, that, uh, you know, does the city go out and, and seek for, um, other organizations that can partake in this particular emergency, uh, shelter aside from the rescue mission? Only, only because, you know, um, there may be other organizations that fit the same criteria. So being that this is a one year, it's a five year plan, maybe in the future, that would be something that the city task on, uh, at least opening it up in public and, and see if, uh, there may be other organizations that can qualify.
Yeah, the, the five year plan outlines homeless, um, the emergency shelter assistance for only one of the five years. So the remaining four years, um, so it was a two, kind of a two-prong approach, if you will. The first was homeless, um, the emergency shelter operation assistance and the remaining four years. As of right now, unless, the way, the way it was submitted was for the rehabilitation or acquisition of affordable housing.
Awesome, thank you.
Seeing no further comments, I'd like to make a motion that we approve item D one.
Now second it.
Uh, I didn't get who that was, because repeat that, Councilwoman Evans? Um, motion to approve item D one by Mayor Garcia, second by Councilwoman Evans, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? The ayes have it, motion passes.
Thank you.
Thank you, Marcella, congratulations. We now move on to item D two, acceptance of playground area at Riverview Park and exercise equipment along Vernon McCullough River Trail. Joseph, welcome.
Yeah, thank you. Okay, um, Ms. Mayor, Mayor Protem, council members, guests, Joey, Mayor presenting item D two, which is the acceptance of the playground area at Riverview Park and exercise equipment along the Vernon McCullough River Trail. Uh, the playground equipment and safety perimeter fencing installation at Riverview Park was completed on twenty seven March this year. Uh, the installation of the playground equipment consisted of a play area for kids two to twelve years old, including a brand new lot with swings. I emphasize swings on that side of town. In addition, a new safety perimeter fence was installed around the play area. Uh, the installation of the playground equipment at Riverview Park was funded by the Department of Caltrans Clean California Local Grant Program. In twenty twenty two, the city was funded eight hundred thirty two thousand three hundred and fifty thousand for the completion of several grant components, including the following. Litter abatement, installation of thirty six trash receptacles, trail restorations, playground equipment, exercise equipment, educational and trail signage. Last week on the twenty eighth, we had a ribbon, ribbon cutting ceremony commemorating the play equipment installation. Uh, the Riverview Park now has the following, a custom round five steel play system, eight foot arch swing bays. I emphasize swings again, with a, with full bucket seats and inclusives, an inclusive seat. And I say this because we don't have any swings on that part of town, so this is a, a big, big thing for, for this city. There also has two six foot benches inside the play area. You can see what the structure looks like, it's very pleasing to the eye, uh, something that wasn't there before, was just an empty lot. Uh, swings, again, I emphasize the word swings. Uh, this was the ribbon cutting ceremony, so actually it was a good turnout. We had a lot of children there, uh, and it was just really a, a, a good showing. And, uh, actually, I drive by there at least, I don't know, a couple of times since then, and it seems to be a active, uh, area. So there seems to be a lot of children and it's very receptive, uh, the community is very receptive to this. Uh, still pending, we have an additional third bench for the Riverview Park and it's outside of the play, playground area and then also two new trash receptacles. The Vernon McCullough River Trail specifically in the Westbury Boulevard to the Caitlin Drive now has the following, five motion capable exercise equipment machines. Uh, the city, uh, we plan to have, uh, integrate the celebration of the exercise equipment and with the finalization of the seal coating that's underway along the trail and we'll do a, um, walk the trail event in the, in the future as soon as that's done. Uh, again, this is what the exercise equipment looks like, um, and it's very functional. I think we've, we've, um, put it on other places on the trail, but this is a good, good shot of it. Uh, the financial impact, I, I do want to highlight that during the excavation phase of the playground, the installer encountered an unexpectedly high quantity of concrete slabs underneath. Uh, there was a lot of miscellaneous debris, uh, it, it really necessitated a lot of excavation and disposable efforts. And we confirmed these findings and observed that the extra time needed to clear the site and it resulted in additional costs of seven thousand seven hundred and thirty dollars. To date, you can see what we spent the money on and, uh, when I came to this apartment, I didn't realize parks and things were this, were this expensive, but this is quite a bit of money. When I saw the eight hundred and thirty two thousand dollars, I was thinking, gee, that's a lot of money to spend over a period of time, but, uh, we're doing a good job of doing that. Uh, you can see that the, uh, exercise equipment was well over two hundred thousand dollars. Uh, we've had the change order I mentioned earlier for seventy seven hundred thirty dollars. Uh, this perimeter fencing, uh, the improvements, uh, for the ceiling of the, of the trail, hundred ninety thousand. We have the change order that we, uh, with Seal Right as well for sixty two thousand that we've talked about before. Uh, the thirty six trash receptacles that, uh, they're going to cost us about fifty six thousand dollars and hundred forty bucks. An inspector for the playground equipment is, uh, nine hundred dollars. Uh, the third, third bench for the Riverview Park to meet the grant component is going to be fifteen hundred and twenty six dollars and ninety seven cents. Uh, so far on the litter abatement, uh, for the trail and actually we've got a lot and a good, good feedback for what we've done to this since I've been here. Uh, we've really cleaned up that trail and we've spent a hundred ninety five thousand dollars on that. Uh, we spent another fifteen hundred fifty six on advertisement for a total of seven hundred and eighty one thousand five hundred and seventy seven and thirty four cents. What we have remaining is fifty thousand seven seven two and sixty six cents. And, uh, we, we're talking as a staff, we're going to spend this money, trust me, we will spend it. Uh, so I, I don't have any doubts about that, but that's where our, and coming from a, uh, I guess the, the corporate world, uh, we're, this is a good thing. We're under budget and we're over delivering. So, uh, I, you know, I commend the staff and we've actually gone through a lot of, uh, RFPs and negotiations in order to get to this point. So with the balance, uh, we'll, we'll do, what, what we're talking about is, uh, doing materials and supplies for more trash receptacles and insulation. Uh, we'll probably do maybe some more educational anti-litter signage panels on the garbage, garbage cans that we're going to get. Uh, more trail, trail markers at the end of the, the, the trail, uh, two new trash receptacles, litter abatement for continued cleanup, cleanup efforts at the river and, uh, just grant management administrative costs. So like I said, we will spend this money. Uh, we, uh, recommend that, uh, the council approve the minute order, uh, we, and the, uh, recommend that we accept the playground installation at Riverview Park. Uh, we approve the additional, we're recommending an approval of the additional change order for seven, seven thousand seven hundred and thirty dollars. Accept the, uh, exercise equipment along the trail, um, and then also the, uh, we record the notice of completion. And that concludes my presentation, if I'm here for any questions.
Thank you, Joseph. Are there any members of the public wishing to comment on item D, uh, two? Are there any, uh, Zelda, are there any members of the public wishing to comment on Zoom or in written form?
Uh, none, Mayor.
Okay, we'll close public comment, bring them back to my colleagues for discussion. Councilmember Montes.
Uh, thank you, Mayor. Yeah, Director Ibarra, I do want to say thank you very much, uh, for this project. I know, um, during the ribbon cutting, I spoke about the first time that this came, I think to our attention was like twenty twenty two. And I know we talked to Arnold, told somebody about another grant two years before it actually happened. So I do want to say thank you to you, to all your staff for having the vision, sticking with it, meeting with the community when they had concerns about, you know, some of the things that that are going to go on there. That day, it was, I think it was sunny the day before and then that day in the morning, it was pouring down rain. So I was, I was kind of worried. I was like, man, I don't think anyone's going to show up, you know, people were, oh, you know, it's not going to be utilized. But when I got there, it was cold, colder than I thought it was going to be. But there was a bunch of people and then we gave ice cream and everybody was eating ice cream. So yeah, so you know, it didn't stop anybody, you know, talking to people. It isn't just serving the street. It isn't even just serving that neighborhood, it's serving the whole community. And so I really appreciate all the hard work in your staff do. Going after grants like this, the visions you guys have and the dedication and everything you guys do for the community. So thank you very much. Really appreciate it.
Oh, and I would like to make a motion to approve item.
Thank you. A second.
I just want to make a real quick comment really quick. Going along with Councilmember Montes' comments, I know that you had to put a lot of effort into getting it done and getting pushback from some in the community. It was a small group, small members that that were against the park being placed in that location. But I think that the end result after your efforts, joint efforts, I might say, but we're tuning yourself and council member want this to get this done. It's a it's a very much needed green space in that area that's developed into a playground. So that's a plus for that area. When you showed that that graph or not the graph, but that one slide about the signage. We did vote in the past to create non smoking at all our parks. So I'm thinking we are going to add one of those too.
Yeah, absolutely.
Okay, all right. Well, that that concludes my comment. And now Councilmember Montes makes a motion to pass the item D two. Is there a second?
I second it.
Council, Mayor Pro Tim Gallegos, all those in favor say aye.
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 Any opposed? The ayes have it, motion passes. So we now move on to item D three, Sunrise Rotary Sports Complex Rental for Cinco de is that Cinco de Mayo or PRM, PRM Cars and Comida Three K Run Event Fee Waiver. Getting close to me, so I was thinking Cinco de Mayo.
What time? I'm right here. So that's the one.
Yeah. May fourth.
Okay. Joe Abert again, Mr. Mayor, Mayor Pro Tim, guests, council members. I'm presenting item D three, which is Sunrise Rotary Sports Complex Rental for the Cinco de PRM.
Prm?
PRM.
Project Run Madera.
Cars and Comida Three K Run Event. And this is a fee waiver request. The city received an inquiry from Project Run Madera requesting waiving rental fees for using Sunrise Rotary Sports Complex on Saturday, May fourth to host a Cinco de Prm Car and Comida Three K Run. The event is to take place from seven AM to one PM. The proceeds from this event will directly contribute to efforts to provide a free summer track clinic for students in grades K through twelve. The clinic will promote physical fitness and provide opportunities for mental and emotional development through structured athletic activities led by professional athletes and coaches. Project Run Madera's primary initiative includes transforming lives and communities through the power of running. Alicia Brown is its founder, is a former college athlete and track runner from Madera. Project Run Madera is a nonprofit organization founded in two thousand and twenty one, dedicated to supporting student athletes and individuals, providing them with the running gear, resources and opportunities they need to excel in the sport. The fees that we're looking to get waived, we have an administrative fee of twenty five dollars, rental charges of three hundred and a deposit of two hundred totaling five hundred and twenty five dollars. We recommend that we adopt this fee waiver and that would conclude my presentation. Take, I'm here for any questions.
Thank you, Joe. Are there any members of the public wishing to speak on this item? If you need, if you want to, that you're perfectly willing to do that?
Good evening, everyone. Good evening, council members. Just thank you for the opportunity to be here to speak to you guys about this. I'm hoping that you guys will generously consider waiving this for for our youth. The funds, as Mr. Joe Herbert mentioned, go straight to our summer track clinic. In the past, we've hosted up to two hundred athletes coming in from mainly Madera. We've had up to, I believe it was two hundred and thirty athletes. And that was in two thousand and twenty two. And even in the heat of last year with the highs of one thirteen, we had a hundred and of close to a hundred and fifty athletes showing up for a two day track clinic. We we partner with the Madera Food Bank. They help us with providing breakfast. We try to get sponsors from restaurants so that we can feed them. Last year, we fed them through Fastway Chicken and Pacheco's Tacos. And so we make sure that they're well fed, well hydrated. We had unlimited supply of water and Gatorades. And then we bring in professional athletes to to train these kids and the, I mean, just them learning and taking track seriously, but also having the most fun out there. We had water stations and cooling stations. You would think that the heat might stop them, but it absolutely did not. And so I think if we can continue to provide these kind of services, it's just going to heighten our numbers with with kids in sports, again, keeping them out of trouble, keeping them off of the street, helping them to make those right decisions, getting some leadership and and training and not just in athletics, but you know, how to be a team member, how to be accountable, how to just just be well rounded. And I think the sport offers that. And so we're really hoping that you'll consider this event. It is going to be a community event. Our Cinco de PRM Mayor, as you mentioned, it is for Cinco de Mayo, but it will be May fourth. We want it to be a family event for for all to come and join in. We have already spoken to Madera High's Folcorico Group. They have agreed to come and participate and showcase their their skills. And so we're hoping we can get vendors and things to help us out. So if you would, you know, please consider we would truly, truly appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there any further public comment? Do we have any Zoom or written comment there, Zelda?
None, Mayor.
Thank you. We will close public comment and bring it back for to my colleagues for discussion and our motion.
I move to approve item D three.
I second.
Motion to we're going to give you this one. Motion to approve item D three by Councilmember Montes, second by Councilwoman Mejia. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The ayes have it. Thank you very much. Congratulations. We are inviting us out there, right? Okay.
Think you have to run?
I ain't running. I'm walking fast. We will now move on to item D four. Procure server and storage area network SAN hardware under a state of California government contract with Dell Marketing LP. There we go. Take it away.
All right. Good evening, Mayor, Mayor Pro Tim and council members. I'm Gary Price and I'm the IT Director for the city. And we need to procure some IT equipment. It's starting to get old. So this is item D four for procuring server and storage area network SAN hardware under a state of California contract. The city procures various types of IT hardware in the course of business. Under the city's procurement regulations, IT purchases are authorized to occur under contracts negotiated by other government agencies per California Contract Code, Section ten two ninety nine. One such agreement is with Dell Marketing LP in the state of California through the National Association of State Procurement Officials, NASPO, which allows government agencies to procure computer equipment and related services at contracted prices. The recommended procurement will replace our aging IT infrastructure, which has reached its end of life or EOL. Some of the servers are are right around seven years older, a little bit older, some are a year or two newer, but they're they're past their prime. The IT department has received a quote from Dell under the NASPO contract. And staff is seeking to purchase six replacement servers with the related components, including switches, transceivers, racks and hard drives, among other things. These are just like the the top offenders. As you can see in the report, it's got like a two page list of all the things. But the big items are the software peripherals are a hundred and thirty nine thousand. The server hardware itself is a hundred and ten thousand, five hundred. There's IT racks, mounting hardware, power supplies at thirty three thousand and server support and maintenance at twenty seven thousand. And then you see there's a question mark for the total, so wait for it. The 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 cost, the dollar amount for the purchases exceeds the city manager's purchasing authority. The city manager may sign agreements to procure goods and services up to sixty thousand. And the city's expenditure for this equipment will be three hundred and twenty nine thousand, eleven dollars and forty one cents. And for this reason, this is why the the item is here for your consideration this evening. Our adopted twenty three, twenty four fiscal year budget includes an appropriation four hundred thousand dollars for the purchase of replacement IT equipment. To date, we've only spent about forty thousand, which leaves three hundred and sixty thousand in there for the replacement of networking switches provided by and then, excuse me, so the remaining funds, there's enough to to fund this purchase that we're talking about this evening. So our requested action is adopt a resolution approving city Madera's purchase of this equipment under the contract between the state of California and Dell. And once again, that's three hundred and twenty nine thousand, eleven dollars and forty one cents. And if you have any questions, I would be happy to answer them.
Thank you very much, sir. Do we have any members of the public wishing to address item D five? Zelda, do we have any written or Zoom comments on item D five?
We do not.
Thank you very much. Yes, item D four, I'm getting ahead of myself here. Excuse me, under item D four. So then we will close public comment on item D four and bring it back to my colleagues for comment and our motion.
I remove to approve item D.
I think Councilwoman Mejia had a question first.
Thank you, Gary, for the presentation. I'm just curious, which city department has the oldest servers and which are in the greatest need of replacement?
Pretty much City Hall has the oldest. But it's kind of split half and half between police and everyone else. The police's are a year to two years newer, so they're not, they're not being affected by this phase. So it's everybody but police for this phase.
Thank you.
Councilmember Montes?
Oh, I moved to D four.
Second.
Motion to approve item D four by Councilmember Montes, second by Mayor Pro Tim Gallegos. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Ayes have it. Motion passes.
Right, thank you.
Thank you. We will now move on to item D five. And this is an amendment number four to professional services agreement with Provost and Pritchard Consulting Group. Mr. Tackett, do you have this item?
So Will is on vacation in New Orleans, so I'm going to take this item.
Nice.
So thank you very much, council.
Absolutely, Arnold.
So the, so the item before council this evening is a fourth amendment with the private company called Provost and Pritchard that's been assisting the city for a number of years with professional planning services. As council and the community is well aware, we've been operating very lean in the planning department. And while we're actively recruiting planners, it's it's been a very difficult job market for us to recruit for. We we currently have in the city's adopted budget, council had previously allocated some funds for for assistance from from outside companies. Those funds have not been allocated to an individual company. So part of this item, it's somewhat twofold. There's a request to allocate the eighty thousand dollars, which again, council previously approved. However, it's to allocate it to Provost and Pritchard. And there's a second component to allocate sixty nine thousand dollars contract, but it's one contract that's combined of LEAP funds, which is a grant fund that we are in the process of receiving from the state of California. The purpose of the fund or the grant, I should say, for sixty nine thousand dollars is to accelerate the the development of housing in our community. What what staff is proposing on doing is taking the full funds and allocating them to Provost and Pritchard. Provost and Pritchard will begin to assess some zoning code updates that are going to be mandatory as part of the six six cycle of the housing element, which we're currently doing. So one of the things that we're trying to do, the LEAP funds have to be spent before the end of June. So knowing that, what we're attempting to do is we understand from talking to HCD at the state that we're going to have to make some amendments. So what we're trying to do is get ahead of it. And that's going to put us in a better position to be in compliance with the state a bit sooner. So we do have some challenges in terms of I wouldn't say timing, but but we have about three months to use the sixty nine thousand dollars. We've spoken with Provost and Pritchard. They're confident that they're going to be able to assist us. And again, the sixty nine thousand dollars is not for entitlement processing, rather, it's to set us up to be in compliance with the housing element. The housing element is an element within the general plan. And it's one of the few elements that actually has to be submitted to the state of California for approval. The state has historically given great deference to local agencies for land use authority, with the exception of the housing element. And so the housing element does have to be submitted for review and approval, and we're currently in the process of updating that. It's done every eight years. It's very timely. It's 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 a very involved process. And our community development director, Will Tackett, is serving as the project manager for that. So with that being said, that concludes staff's presentation. So again, this request is for a hundred and forty thousand dollars approximately for contract with Provost and Pritchard. Thank you.
Thank you. Under item D five, are there any members of the public wishing to comment on this item? Zelda, do we have any Zoom or written comments on this item?
We do not.
We'll close public comment and bring it back to my colleagues for discussion and or emotion.
I motion to approve D five as presented.
How do you want to go on today? Motion to approve item D five by Council, Mayor Pro Tim Gallegos, second by Councilmember Viegas. All those in favor say aye.
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 Any opposed? The ayes have it, motion passes. Thank you very much, Arnold.
Thank you.
We will now move on to item E, Administrative Reports. Item E one is the city's annual ACFRF fiscal year twenty twenty two, twenty twenty three. Sir Lima.
Good evening, Mayor, Council, Mike Lima, Mike Lima, Director Financial Services. It is my great pleasure tonight to bring to you for your acceptance the FY twenty two, twenty or yeah, FY twenty two, twenty three Act for the, you know, there is a couple of very important books that finance produces every year. One of them is the budget, the other one is the Act for. A lot of people focus on the budget and rightfully so. It is a very important document. But I would argue that the Act for is actually more important. The budget, even in the best of situations, is only good for a year. Act for is forever. It is history. It tells you what happened with the city financially, where it stands at the end of a particular, at the end of a fiscal year. And kind of gives a snapshot of how effective the organization was in implementing the policies that have been set by this council. And so with that, I am going to turn over the presentation to Andrew Roth from the Poon Group, who was very instrumental in helping to put this Act for together. And after Mr. Roth is done, I will have a few final comments. So Andrew, if you would, take it away.
Sure. Can everybody hear me?
Yes.
Great. I'm going to share my screen really quickly. We have a presentation to go through. Okay, so we're here to go through the presentation to go over the So we're here to go through the presentation to go over the, our audits of the City of Madera for the year ended June 30, 2023. So this is going to include the, obviously, the Act for, as well as a couple of other deliverables, which we'll go through shortly. So a couple of things we'll go through, just a couple of work. Some required communications from the auditing standards for those charging governments, that'd be the city council in this case. Overview of the financial statements, kind of a very broad level overview. Some key financial indicators and pension and OPEB information. And then we'll go through the audit results. So our scope of work and timing. So our scope of work is going to be the financial statement audit. That's going to be your annual comprehensive financial report. And then there you have two audits that have financial statement as well as compliance. That's going to be your Transportation Development Act audit, as well as your Measure T sales tax audit, that's both required by the MCTC. And also a compliance audit. So that's going to be the single audit related to federal expenditures. So some required communications. So as part of the audit, there are responsibilities, the responsibilities for both the auditor and also management. So we'll go through management's to start. So management's responsible for the financial statements. Management's responsible to present the financial statements in accordance with accounting principles generally accepted United States of America. To adopt sound accounting policies, establish and maintain internal controls or financial reporting and compliance, to provide evidence supporting the amounts and disclosures in the financial statements. Management's also responsible for the fair presentation of those financial statements that are free from material misstatements, whether due to fraud or error. And also management's responsible to prevent and detect fraud. We, as the auditors, we are responsible to perform the audit in conformity with auditing standards generally accepted United States of America and standards applicable to the financial audits contained in the government auditing standards issued by the Comptroller General of the United States. We're responsible to communicate with those charging governments. A letter also was sent over, the kind of our communication letters. We'll kind of briefly go over it. But, and then this is part of our communication with the council. We are also responsible to assess the audit risk of internal control or financial reporting, to determine fairness of the presentation of the financial statements, and at the end, to render an opinion on the financial statements. And also to issue recommendations to management if there are any. And typically, I think we, there's one noted in the single audit. Typically, all that's going to be in the single audit report. So you guys have an annual single audit report. Typically, that's where we put any of those items. So some required communications. So significant accounting policies, if you really wanted kind of just a really good broad overview of the different, the reporting entity, just the general accounting policies, and how things are treated in the financial statements, and Note 1 is going to be the place to go. In Note 1, you're going to note that we, there were items, there were implementations in St. Gatsby's this year. And there were four. So you had the 91, the conduit debt obligations, the 91, the conduit debt obligations. 94 is the public-private and public partnerships and availability payment arrangements. 96 is subscription-based IT arrangements. And number 99 is going to be the omnibus 2023. And at this point, you guys did not have anything significant out of those that actually required any significant disclosures. But I know last year we did the leases, so that was a new one. But this year, there wasn't anything applicable. So significant estimates. So as part of the financial statements, estimates are required to be made to kind of present the financial information. So the fair value investments, the depreciation on capital assets, like how your pretty sure life of the capital asset, how long you think it's going to last for, net pension liability, as well as the total OPEB liability. These are going to be actually your determined estimates usually. So we'll use a specialist in that case. Some other required communications, so sensitive disclosures. If you were to go into financial statements, show note, as I said, Note 1. And these are pretty similar to last year's, the lease receivable, since it's still a second year, it's still, I'd still say it's sensitive, but not too sensitive because... But then pension plans and OPEB, the other post-employment benefits, I believe, are the big ones. Other required disclosures, it tells you some good information about any kind of deficit fund balances or any kind of appropriation, like excess over the amount. Note 20, that's going to be your commitments to contingency, that's going to really, any kind of like outstanding liabilities. And aside from this, the general disclosure, there was nothing new that popped up this year. Also, we did not note any corrected or uncorrected misstatements during the year. That means we didn't have to post any drawings. So we're also required to communicate about the consultation with other accountants. It's kind of a, kind of a warm shopping kind of figuring. So they, based on our understanding and discussing with the team, they did not go to any other accountants or auditors for anything regarding auditing or other matters. We also had no significant difficulties with management, and we did not have any disagreements with any accounting terms or the treatment or procedures performed during the audit. So we're going to go over an overview of the financial statements. So you will see in the current year, so the ending assets for the governmental, the government-wide entity was about 490 million. That was an increase of about 13 million. The deferred outflows of resources, you'll note that that's about 20 million in the current year, as opposed to nine, about 10 million dollar increase. So your liabilities also increased kind of hand in hand with the assets. So they did increase about $9 million, 156 million. And deferred inflows did decrease to 2.7 million from 18.3. And most of that's going to be related specifically to the OPEB and pension. Mostly, it's related to the income, the amortization of the difference between their expected income and their, that's why you saw pension liability go up and down between the COVID year, when you had all that stock market booming, and then pension liability went down, and the next year it went up. But it's always a year behind, so it's not like last year, it's two years ago is when the market decline was. So a lot of that's amortized through that deferred input or outflow, depending on which way it goes. So that's where you'll see some of those swings. The net investment in capital assets decreased slightly. The main reason of decreasing in that investment in capital assets is general depreciation. So let's just wear on assets. The restricted assets, so that's going to be anything restricted legally or anything, any kind of law or ordinance that increased slightly to $52 million from 46. And unrestricted net position, so that's going to be your kind of everything else. It's not every, that I didn't just say, that increased to 59 million, there we go. So here, you will see the overall, the overall change in net position for the government-wide activities. So you'll see expenses were about $79 million. And you got to know, when you're looking at the government-wide, the government-wide also includes, because you guys budget at the general fund level, at the fund, governmental fund level, it's a little bit different than when you see this because there's a lot of the pension items and that stuff where you're seeing that affect expenses. So our next slide, when we get into the general fund, you'll see like stuff that you actually would see in like a budget. So this has a little, a couple of extra factors, but it's just a general overview. So the expenses did increase to 79 million in the current year. So your program revenues, there's going to be anything that you can allocate specifically to expenses. That increased slightly as well to about $4 million, about 59 million in the current year. And that costs of services, so they use that ratio. You'll see it in a couple of slides. And that's just used to be as, you have more ability to change the net costs of services by adjusting fees than you probably would with the taxes because the ability to change those to a point where it actually increases. The cost of services shows what the expenses versus your actual program allocable expenses. And then your, the general revenue, that's when we get into the taxes. So that increased slightly to 36 million. And as I stated, because last year, we had the, there was a giant decrease in investment all across the board, everywhere. Income, that you'll see that swing from an income loss, investment loss, to an investment gain in the current year. So the overall, there was about a $20 million change in net position at the end of the year. So your general fund. The general fund's assets decreased. And I think part of this is because we did split out, I think, I want to say last year, we had the ARPA fund in the general fund, and I think it split out this year into a separate fund, which took that cash, but also obviously took the liability because the, all of that, all the ARPA funding is unearned revenue until it's actually spent. So both of those decreased. So then the deferred inflows of resources for your general fund, that's going to be related specifically to leases. And that has, also has an asset, like a lease receivable and a deferred inflow. So, and those kind of like go together. So there's a bit of an offset there. So your fund balance, the non-spendable, that's going to be your prepaid and inventories, decreased slightly. The restricted increased to 2.3 million. And the committed balance, so this is going to be, it has a couple of components, but also the big one in the committed balance is going to be like a stabilization agreement for that, kind of like a rainy day fund. So the assigned fund balance, so there's going to be items that are assigned at the level that's directed by the city council, which usually would be the city manager, decreased slightly to 15.7. And unassigned, that is everything else, increased to, increased to 12.2 million. So the overall fund balance is 45 million in the current year. And let's get to the income statement, that's the moral. So the general fund income statement here, so you see revenues increased slightly, 1.2 million from year to year, and the expenditures increased as well. So the revenue over expenditures in the general fund was about, before transfers, was about 3.7 million dollars. And then if you add the transfers into that for like payments on capital projects being funded, you'll note a change in net position, 7.15. And that's like actual, on the government-wide level, it's stuff where it's really expenses from actually determined. This is actually a change in like actual budgeted like cash that you budget, that you see, that you would see. So some financial, key financial indicators and pension and OPEB information. So the net cost of services and tax revenue, I actually went away from using this slide, but it didn't, because with the COVID fluctuated stuff a lot, but it's still a good ratio to use. So it just shows how much ability you have to flexibility to change kind of net costs of services, to change those fees as opposed to the taxes. So it did decrease a little bit, but that's not, that's not a bad thing. And this is your, and typically, so we're on the rainy day fund slide, and I, it can be done two ways. So you, it's the, so rainy day fund means how many, how much extra unassigned fund balance you have versus the years of expenditures. And the safe harbor is about 20%. Here, just whether you're unassigned, you're at about 32%, but if you throw in your stabilization, I think you're closer to like 60%. So I think that's like, you're well above any kind of safe harbor, very good position with that rainy day fund. As I, so the net pension liability, this is kind of your, the sensitivity analysis. It's, it'll show you what 1% increase or 1% decrease will do. And you'll see that 1% decrease will go about $25 million increase. And I probably want to look the other way because it's probably going to go down as opposed to up, because it already went down this year from 7.15 to 6.9. So the 25%, 0.25% change on that discount rate. So your OPEB discount rate, so there's two different items here for the OPEB because you're both healthcare costs and then also the discount rate. So they're inverse relationships. So if the discount rate decreases, your costs are going to go up. But if healthcare costs decrease, your OPEB is going to go down. So it's kind of like inverse. But it just gives a little, it's a good idea and adds a little bit more information if you want to look at the financial statements for this. So our audit results. So the audit results, the opinion, so unmodified opinion for all opinion units. It states that the financial statements are fairly presented in all material respect. Accounting policies have been consistently applied. Estimates are reasonable. Disclosures are reflected in the financial statements. It also says there's no disagreements with management. There's no material weaknesses or significant deficiencies in the financial statement in financial reporting. And there was no accounting issues. And we also noted no inappropriate activities. And then we also, this is the same opinion, overall opinion for both the Act for, the TDA, as well as the Measure T, all of those were clean. So the single audit, it was a unmodified opinion. We did audit the airport improvement program, as well as the Corona virus state and local fiscal recovery fund. And so both the internal controller of financial reporting and compliance were unmodified. We did note one, we have one finding in the report specifically related to some submitting of reports. And I think part of the reason was there wasn't like activity, but per the airport grant agreement, you have to submit them, even if you're not doing anything. So it might have been overlooked, but that is the one finding that you will see there. And that was just a significant deficiency, so it's a smaller finding. It's not a material weakness. Thank you very much. If you have any questions, please let me know.
Thank you, Andrew. So, you know, in, just to kind of wrap up what Andrew said, these numbers show that we're in a solid financial position. Let's just put it that way. Let me just get right to the chase and say it. We're in a solid financial position. That, the fact that we're in that position, when a lot of other government agencies, you've, I've talked about it two weeks or a couple of weeks ago, you're hearing, we've got budget problems from a lot of other places. And to be in the position we're in, we're not in that position at this point. And that's a good place to be. And it's a direct reflection, and that's why it was mentioned earlier, I think the Act for is so important. These results show the direct reflection of the policies that's been established by this council and executed by the city manager and staff. It really shows what the financial results of those are. And while the work never ends, there's always challenges, there's always needs. I don't think it would be inappropriate to just take a moment to acknowledge that these policies are moving us in a financially stable position and allowing us that flexibility. So, you know, good for us. Now let's get back to work. So, so with that, I recommend acceptance of the Act for. And if you have any questions, myself or Mr. Roth would be happy to answer them. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much, Mike, and thank you, Andrew, for this report. Do we have any members of the public wishing to comment on the Act for under item E1?
I don't see any on Zoom or the phone.
Thank you very much, Zelda. We will close public comment and bring it back to my colleagues for comments and/or emotion. I do want to make a, there we go. Councilmember Rodriguez.
Yes, thank you, Mayor Garcia. Andrew, thank you again for the presentation, Mike. You know, I just want to go back to, you presented a slide in regards to the safe harbor with respects to the unassigned or the reserve fund balance. So in your opinion here, Mike or Andrew, what is, what is, what is a very safe, or what's a very safe reserve balance to have with the budget of ours, like our general budget?
You know, Government Finance Officers Association and also the Government Accounting Standards Board recommend about a 20%. I know our policy is 30. In my experience in government, you can never have too much money in reserve. But I do, the professional organizations do recommend at least a 20% reserve.
And ours right now is hovering over what, 30?
About 30, yeah.
Okay. Now, that being said, I did see the expenditures for the annual expenditures of 35 million. Where does that put us in case we run into a jam? Does that put us at like four months worth of expenditures?
Yeah, about that. We have, so the general fund is a budget of about 40, right around 40 million. We have a little over 12 million in that reserve. And so that would put us at about three months, three to four months of operations. That's correct.
It's always good. I mean, just, you know, sometimes, you know, we don't see how public entities are performing. I think what this report certainly tells us, you know, along with our annual budgets. But it's good to know that, you know, if that ever came to that, that we're able to operate at least for the four months. And in other cases, you see that a lot lower. So I just want to thank you again, thank the council for always putting the best interest of the community first and making sure that we balance our budgets. And again, having a healthy reserve. So thank you, and thank you, Andrew.
Mayor Protem.
Thank you, Mayor Garcia. I just wanted to just reiterate counsel, Vegas' comments, and great job, well done. Thank you, Mike, for stepping in and becoming the director into our wonderful world in the city of Madera. And Arnoldo, for doing such a... And Arnaldo for doing such a great job and, and steering the ship and giving us the advice and giving us the direction and giving us the information that we need to make those decisions. So with that, great report. And Andrew, thank you for laying it out pretty well for us that we didn't have to try to decode anything, Mike. And even when you present before, when we were on council, when I first got on, it was, we had to decode everything that came through. And I was thinking I have to get a degree in accounting because I don't understand any of this. So thank you for laying that out to the term where we can make those decisions. And I appreciate all your hard work. That's all.
Thank you. Looking back on the history of Madera, in 2018, we were in dire straits. We couldn't understand where some funds were. There were some mystery funds. There was all these accounts that had to be adjusted in 2018. There was a deficit in 2018. And for this report to come out saying where we're at is a very big difference. And it goes to the leadership of our, of our city manager, in my opinion, quite frankly. We've had some changes in department heads and it's been very trying for this council. But the, the acknowledgement that we have great leadership here in our administration is what the reason why we are here today. I'd love to take a, you know, credit for everything that's on there, but no, it is due to our staff that's very hardworking and that's made sure that we are fiscally responsible with the people's, people's funds. So again, thank you very much for that. And thank my colleagues also for, for doing the work that they do and making sure that we are conservative as how we spend the, the funds that we do. And with that, if there's no further comments from my colleagues, then we'll make a motion to accept item E1.
Motion to approve item E1 is presented.
Is there a second?
Second, Tim.
Motion to approve item E1 by Councilwoman Evans, second by Councilmember Montes. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The ayes have it. Thank you very much for that report.
Thank you.
We will now move on to item E2, the Madera Sub Basin Joint Groundwater Sustainability Plan, GSP. Council update and consideration of five-year evaluation and the update of the GSP. Keith, I know you're there.
I am here. Thank you, Mayor, council members. Let's see, we'll go ahead and get this started. Okay, you should be able to go ahead and see that.
Yes.
As the title goes, this is the update and consideration, five-year elevate evaluation update of the GSP. Yeah, if I can get my mouse working here. Working kind of. Anyway, a little bit of background before the revised GSP submittal. The last update to the council occurred on March 20th, 2023. That update focused on the revised groundwater sustainability plan that was split to the Department of Water Resources. The revised GSP addressed multiple deficiencies identified in DWR's review of the original GSP from their September 22nd, 2022 letter. DWR's review also required a revised coordination agreement and a new agreement for domestic water well mitigation. After the revised GSP submittal, Madera Irrigation District determined it would not approve the revised GSP. I want to go ahead and note in the staff report, I indicate that MID would not sign the coordination agreement. What MID did not do is they, they would not approve of the GSP itself. So that's, that's a fairly significant difference there. And I just want to go ahead and make a point of saying that. Going through a little bit of the history, March 28th, 2023, MID's decision to not sign was explained in a press release. That was just before April 6th, 2023, when DWR requested clarification as to why MID did not approve the revised GSP. When DWR reviewed that decision by MID, they interpreted it as a, as something that might risk the, the basin management. They weren't concerned what, what, what MID was proposing. So MID, MID did clarify what they meant by not doing that again through a separate means. They had a letter on April 21st, 2023 wherein they responded to DWR request for clarification. They indicated that MID confirms it has not and will not adopt the revised GSP. They are at present, I think they've offered, they have offered to go ahead and approve of the GSP. That's in separate correspondence that we have. But right now, this, this is the official to the DWR. They did affirm that its commitment to the projects and programs outlined in the GSP. At this point, MID has indicated that they are substantially, if not nearly completely done with the, the projects that they, that they had within the GSP. Following their, MID's determination to not approve of the GSP, there was some concern that, that the state might, from my perspective, take a hard stance with regard to the, to the local GSP. But it turned out that they didn't take that hard stance. They, on December 21st, 2023, just before Christmas, they ultimately decided to approve of the revised GSP and the revised coordination agreement. And for whatever reason, they, they, they considered the GSP and the coordination agreement as collectively as a plan. This provides a little bit more clarity in what they were thinking. Their approval was based upon the following logic, which I took directly from their approval letter. The approval is based on recommendations from the staff report, their staff report, including as an exhibit, the attached statement of findings, which describes that, that plan has taken sufficient action to correct efficiencies identified in the department and satisfies the objectives of the sustainability, Sustainable Groundwater Management Act or SIGMA and substantially complies with GSP regulations. That is the short and simple explanation of why they accepted the GSP. They, they felt like the, I, I think the good outweighed the bad in terms of the lack of, the lack of approval did not outweigh the fact that the, that the various GSP or various GSAs did answer the state's questions. They did, they did provide everything that they wanted. Well, the Madera Irrigation District did not sign on to the GSP. They did indicate that they supported it. At least the projects and programs in there. They had other concerns with it, but they, but they still supported it. Moving forward, we are, we are now at a point where we're looking at the five-year update. This is, it's the initial GSP, it's now revised as subject to annual reports of progress and five-year updates. We just did our last annual report, turned it in, as I noted previously. After this, they were now working towards the five-year update. The five-year update will occur about the same time as the annual report would be due. That update will address the reevaluation of hydrogeologic model in regard to the new data. Evaluate the monitoring network, any monitoring network gaps, changes in groundwater conditions now and into the future, if they can project those. And impacts on the projects and programs contained in the GSP. It will also incorporate other DWR recommendations from the approved revised GSP. And then the document, well, we need to document the well mitigation program. There is an MOU that's currently in place and the council did approve that just before the revised GSP was submitted last year. It was more of a, let's work together GSAs rather than a plan for how the, the wells would be mitigated when they failed on private residential properties. We do have the consultant that we plan to move forward with. It's the same consultant that was used for the initial GSP preparation. They have a cost of $439,000. If that were split four ways among the various GSPs, that would be about $110,000 for, for Madera. If it's split by acreage, it'd be about 3.1% or a little bit less than $14,000. Recent MID correspondence however indicates that they do not wish to contribute more than the cost to prepare their portion of the update. It's unclear what this might mean, what this might mean at this time. I don't know that anybody really knows that. The, the consultant, the update consultant was copied in on an email with regard to that request. And the consultant indicated that they could go ahead and separate those costs out in the billings for the preparation of the five-year update. They, they didn't make an attempt at what they thought MID might be or what Madera might be. It's staff's, staff's opinion that one of the two funding options seem below or hybrid, both be considered, but not one quarter of the cost as a city, as a city like MID will have completed its GSPs with the next year or so. So those two options are essentially the, the low end or $14,000. Or something that is closer to MID, which is whatever it costs to prepare the, the, the GSP or the five-year update, our actual portion of that. There are pieces of that update that have to be done, whether it's Madera is part of the GSP update or it's Madera on its own doing an update. So I tend to think that 14,000 is the very, very low end, but I don't know where the upper end might be for this. SIGMA also requires implementation of the domestic well mitigation program, as I alluded to. The cost of that program could run into the millions of dollars. When the, the committee of the four GSAs was meeting maybe a year ago, we were, we were struggling to understand what it might cost to, to drill a new well for somebody who's went dry as a result of the, the water table dropping. We were somewhere between 30, 40, $50,000 to replace a well. Now, depending upon how many wells fail in a given year, we could be into the hundreds of thousands of dollars or, or, or more. So that program could be expensive. Now, the bulk of the impacts, at least looking forward to, to domestic wells are associated with those GSAs are not sustainable, at a sustainable position. So I would go ahead and say that Madera Irrigation District or MID would say they have little to no impact. I would say that the city of Madera has little to no impact. Getting a little bit more detailed into it. It's been probably a year or so when we, when the committee was talking about what the city had in terms of impacts to the aquifer, we figured that it might be around 3% or so. And this was, this is going back to data that was going back to the mid 2010, 10s. They, they, when they prepared the GSP, they created a model, a model that they could use to go ahead and look out into the future to at least the year 2040. So they went back to about 2015 or so to use that data. Using that data shows that we had an impact on the water table. We're quickly getting past that because a number of our water meters were going in place even at, even just after 2015. So we'll be nearly complete in the next year or so with our water wells. Impacts may likely go to zero. Then also, the city is also subject to impacts from agricultural uses. So if we're balanced and water table is still dropping and there are a number of projects that aren't going forward, it stands to reason that the city of Madera is being impacted on that. In addition to the options contained in the staff report, which is split by acreage or impact on the aquifer, the city may also wish to assert its impact by other users rather than participate in the domestic well mitigation program. There is a chronic lowering of the groundwater table that will continue if not abated as part of SIGMA in a reasonable manner or reasonable timeframe that results impacts that include lost wells or loss of groundwater quality. If the water table drops, the city could be impacted. Our wells are relatively deep, 500 to 600 feet for most of them. But that doesn't mean that we might drop through a layer in which we have bad water quality where we have to shut down the well or figure out how to treat it quickly. We can be impacted potentially to the same degree as a, as a private landowner. This approach in favor may be complex. The support of those municipal wells do not seem to be characterized as domestic wells and as SIGMA, but rather a community well. Now, I did some, I did some research on that. I didn't spot that we're, there's anything other than I say there. But our MOU that we require, that we submitted to council last year in draft form does include language that indicates the parties, which is all seven GSAs in the Madera Sub Basin agree to review and consider mitigation measure, mitigation for domestic and municipal, I can't talk, and municipal well impacts resulting from declining water levels. Municipal well is a very specific direction towards what we have, which is municipal wells. So I, I would in general assert that we may not need to go ahead and participate in the mitigation program. But that's, that's just speculation right now. Relative to tonight's action, staff is requesting direction on the five-year update level of participation and participation in the domestic well mitigation program. Bear in mind, the direction provided will be what staff presents when discussions begin, begin between the various committee members for the, for the GSP and for the Madera Sub Basin in general. With regard to the five-year update, it's the four GSAs that participate in the update. With regard to the domestic well mitigation, it's the seven GSAs within the sub basin itself. With that, I'll take any questions you may have and I'll take any questions you may have and we'll, we'll take on both of these as, as we can. There are both these questions. Thank you.
Thank you, Keith. Are there any members of the public wishing to dissect item E2 and have questions?
I don't have anybody on zoom or emails.
Thank you very much, Zelda. We will close public comment and bring it back to my colleagues for questions and discussion. House Member Rodriguez.
Yes. Keith, can you, can you go back to that, the domestic well mitigation? I know that, you know, the staff recommendation is that, well, you have several options there, but the.
Share the file again? Is that what you're asking right now?
I'm sorry. Can you hear me now?
Yeah, so I'm just, I'm, I'm curious as to whether you're asking me to go ahead and share the file again.
Domestic well mitigation program, how we participate, right?
Yes.
So, I mean, I always feel that it's, it's best, you know, and how we affect our, our aquifer, the sub basin, right? So if, if that was a percentage, I mean, how much do we impact that ourselves?
I'm sorry. I apologize.
That the, the, the impact's only 3%. And, and that's a fairly small amount. I mean, I don't think the city really has such a big impact on the aquifer as other GSAs. So I, I feel, I don't know if this is staff's direction to move on something that's less costly for, 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 for council, for, for the city. But I, I certainly am in agreement that, you know, we don't have the biggest impact in that aquifer as others or the other GSAs. So at least in, in that part of it, I'm not sure what my colleagues think, but I, I don't feel that we should, you know, take on a big load of that if we're not impacting much of that aquifer, especially if it's, if it represents 3%. And then on the other end, you know, I, I think that also, the other direction that you requested in regards to the five-year update, I feel the same way. I mean, what impact do we have? It's not as much as the other GSAs. That's just my take.
Councilmember Montes.
So I'm, I'm in agreement with that. So it sounds like staff, staff is recommending, correct me if I'm wrong, Keith, staff's recommending the, the 3%. So based off of our participation for paying for it, study based off of acreage and put us at about 3%. And then participate with, what was it? The mitigation with data that we have. And that sounds like that's the extent of what staff is recommending? that we have, and that sounds like that's the extent of what staff is recommending? Because our impacts are relatively low.
Yes, I'll, I'll, I'll jump in and, and take on the domestic well mitigation program first. Three percent, even if it was a million dollars the first year, that would be thirty thousand dollars a year that we would participate. That would be a relatively minor impact to the city compared to, to say, Madera County, which probably has seventy-five percent of the load or, or more. And then I, you know, in talking with various other members of the committee, they've, they've acknowledged that we will go to zero and, and they, they, they tend to expect that we're going to be looking for the three percent. And, and an understanding that we'll, we'll drop it down according to what our true impacts are in, in, in future updates. So I'm thinking, you know, it, it could be that our impact goes lower on the next update, but I can't say that for sure. I, I don't, you know, the, the, the data that goes into these models is, is changing readily or is, is changing fairly regularly. It's like, for instance, we've had two or three good rain years right now. I don't know what that's going to tell us in terms of groundwater, the groundwater table dropping. But it, it, we, we've also been being, I think, more, continuing to be more efficient with our water use because of the meters. I'm, I'm anticipating that we'll be at three percent or less, going, heading into zero eventually. That's the domestic well mitigation program. With regard to the mitigate, the five-year update, I'm, I'm kind of of the opinion that we, we take a similar stance as the Madera Irrigation District, which is our cost of the update. The upper end is a hundred and ten thousand dollars, as I've indicated. But, but our updates are, you know, a lot of the data that we have going in is fairly simplistic. We're gonna say we're ninety-seven percent done on wells and there's not a lot more to go into that. So we should be dropping down away from a hundred and ten thousand dollars to some lower number. Now, as a result of our choosing to request reductions, not so much in the domestic well program, but in the five-year update, obviously those costs need to be covered by somebody. Those costs would ultimately be passed along to Madera County. They're the, they're essentially the big dog in, in this right now in that they've got a large amount of acreage and they're behind on projects. So most of the, most of the costs would go, go to them.
And, and Keith, one another question. So in the past, this was funded by grant funds. And so are we just not anticipating anything would be available? Or, I mean, I, I'm sure for the well mitigation, that's probably something that the, the people who have impact or the G S As are gonna have to foot the bill on. But for the studies, there's no anticipation that grant funds would be available again?
We were, we were hoping to go ahead and get grant funds. And as I recall, we, we did, we did put in some, a, a grant application. I could be wrong. Some of this stuff occurs so fast, but, but we were looking for a grant, but we, we were not successful. So there, we are not anticipating any grant funds at, at this point in time. And given the, the update is due January. Yeah, I don't, I don't think there's, I'm, I'm fairly confident there's nothing coming. Nobody has spoke of a grant in months.
Okay.
Councilmember Rodriguez.
Ah, yes. Thank you, Mayor Garcia. Thank you, Mayor Montes for, for, for clarifying that.
Mayor Montes.
Oh. I apologize. I'm sorry. I didn't catch myself saying that. Thank you, Councilmember Montes. Keith, you know, that third bullet, that, that third bullet point really concerns me there. You know, when we said that the city itself is subject to impacts from agricultural users. And again, this is probably because, like you said, you know, the county, I don't know if it's the county that's behind under projects, but what are we doing as a city to be proactive in trying to create that buffer zone? So that, you know, we, we don't have those impacts from agriculture within our, our city, city, city-owned property. And I, and I know that this may not be completely for this particular meeting or this particular item, but it is something that I'd like to bring up in, in a later agenda item. But, you know, those impacts, what can we do to be more proactive as far as agricultural use within our city?
Well, I, I, I think I can answer some of those right now. And I'm not, I'm not sure whether an additional, additional meeting would be necessary. So obviously, we've got the meters that are coming to a close. We did install, we did go ahead and complete one joint recharge basin with the Madera Irrigation District over along the north side of the river. In working in cooperation with M I D, we also agreed to go ahead and have water diverted into a, a water hazard at the golf course. So there's water going into that and, and the city has been, through permission with M I D, directing additional water into various basins throughout town. So there's, there's been a number of items that occur. And those are showing up in the annual reports that M I D and the city is sharing in these efforts. And, and they're showing that we're getting, that we should be having credits for those. So when we have credits for those, those may very well, well, they should show a reduction in impact from the city. So I, I've been quite pleased with seeing that. That was, you know, getting, making certain that the water went into the various basins throughout town. That was spearheaded by, by our city manager and Public Works was moving pumps around town to go ahead and take that water and put it into the basins as much as they could possibly hold.
And thank you, Keith. I appreciate that. And those partnerships certainly do a, make a big impact in, in the water and recharge and all. I'm, I'm more concerned about city-owned property, such as, you know, property where you have ag leases or you have some type of crops there that are, are, are on, on city-owned property. That, that's what I'm more concerned about.
Okay, city, the other, city-owned property with the city does have a number of areas that are leased by private farmers, notably out by the airport. Those are under, I would call them long-term leases. I think the one closest to expiring is probably eight or 10 years away. When those leases expire, M I D has indicated that they would like to go ahead and provide surface water to them. If, so any re-up of the leases, we could make certain that in our agreement with the farmers, that they know that they're letting go of the, using the water well and moving, moving over to surface water. So we do have that potential.
It's just something to consider. I mean, if we're gonna be proactive in, in following this whole G S P, you know, the city should be, at least assert itself and trying to make sure that we too are, are doing what's in the best interest of the city to try to create those recharge credits as well. And, and some of those properties, again, being leased, drawing from the water through wells obviously has an impact. So, you know, for me, it's always, you know, trying to create a buffer between, you know, you have a, a section or an area that's going to be developed at some point here in the next 20 years. A lot of growth and, and, you know, this is where you have ag. And, you know, again, nothing against ag, but I mean, it's really close to the domestic wells that we utilize. Again, potable water that could potentially, you know, have, have some contaminants if, 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 if we continue to, to use that as an agriculture, especially so close to the proximity of the city residents. That's just my concern. Again, recharge is, is something big with this whole G S P deal.
Sure. And, and I, I think within the next eight or 10 years, those, those leases can be modified. There may be some upfront work for them. The, the wells can stay in place but not be used. And M I D would just need to make sure that they have turnouts for water to go, to, to adequately service those properties for those parcels.
Or maybe re-appropriate that for, for, for some other projects that, that may benefit city residents.
Sure.
Those are my comments.
Thank you, Councilmember Rodriguez. So to, to, to cut to the chase, I've, I've heard these discussions regarding the usage of water by the city of Madera. And that the, the project that we've been putting in place, you outlined some of them. Meters was a huge one, recharging the basins, diverting water over there by the golf course. And conservation have put us in a good place as far as our uses of water. What we're impacted by, and because we belong to a G S A, is other components which have been impacting how much we are gonna take a hit. If we were independent, then we would not be impacted by the others. But because we are in a G S A that is impacted by other entities, then we, we're, we're, we're subject to these, to these dings. But as every time we have, we had these discussions, as far as I'm concerned, and Arnoldo and Keith, you can correct me if I'm wrong, where actually the city of Madera has done a lot toward minimizing the amount of water that we're using and impacting the, the environment. So that, I'm just wanna make sure that we understand that we're, we're doing quite a bit and we will continue to. And then, and by that last graph that you had there, three percent is, is quite substantial for us not to be impacting the aquifer. So if, is there any more comments regarding direction? Because I think Keith was looking for direction.
Yeah, so just to reiterate, the, so for the five-year update, it was split by acreage. This is what I think we should do. And then domestic well mitigation is split by percent of impact on the aquifer.
If that's a motion, I'll second that.
Yeah, that's my motion.
Motion to for, to approve item E two in the recommendations by Councilmember Montes and Councilmember Rodriguez. All those in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed?
Aye, abstain.
Then motion passes. Well, let's make a, a roll call vote, please. Zelda.
Mayor Protem Gallegos.
Yes.
Councilmember Rodriguez.
Yes.
Councilmember Montes.
Yes.
Councilmember Evans.
Yes.
Councilmember Mejia.
Abstain.
Councilmember Villeras.
Yes.
Mayor Garcia.
Yes.
A motion passes six, one.
Thank you very much.
I would just like to clarify, five-year is by acreage. And the groundwater, the domestic well mitigation is the three percent.
Correct.
Yeah.
Good, thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Keith. Thank you for doing that for us. I know it's a lot. We will now move on to item E three, the Madera Municipal Golf Course Update, two thousand twenty-four. Joseph.
Okay. Joe A. Bear, Director of Parks, Mr. Mayor, Mayor Protem, Council guest. Joe, presenting item E three, Madera Municipal Golf Course Update for two thousand twenty-four. Actually, I actually have some help this evening to, since I'm losing my voice here, talking so much, that, that'll help me do this presentation as well. So as you know, on the June twenty-first, two thousand twenty-three, council approved Ninth Amendment to the Madera Municipal Golf Course Management Lease Agreement with S G M, Sierra Golf Management. S G M has provided an update recapping the two thousand twenty-three and updating on what is now new for two thousand twenty-four at the golf course. And with that, I'll turn it over to my co-host, Mr. Dan.
Good evening, Council. Dan Bachi, Sierra Golf Management. Thanks for having me here today. Quick update on what's been going on at the golf course. The golf course is in a good, good place right now. We've had a few changes in staffing that we're gonna talk about. Our longtime golf professional, Ron Goring, has moved on to another facility. More of a part-time position with, at one of our other facilities. We have our new head professional, Tanner Madison. He's our manager. He's been with the company for twelve years now and experienced both the public and private sector. And he's a, a young man with a lot of vision and bringing some new ideas to the course and some fresh ideas for the younger people that we're seeing show up at the golf course these days. Golf continues to be strong. You know, we all got the COVID push of golf and we've heard all about that. The increase in play and nationally, not just locally, but nationally, golf has increased and its popularity is increasing, even though you might hear some crazy things on TV about live golf and all these other golf leagues. Golf in the nation is up and Madera is following that same trend. In fact, we have a young girl from Chowchilla that plays at our course in Chowchilla, Astrick, Astrisk Tally, who at age fifteen is right now in Augusta, Georgia, one of seventy-two women golfers, amateur women golfers from all around the world. And she shot even par today. And so everybody's proud of her, but she is, if she makes the cut, she will then be playing at Augusta National on Saturday. It's a very prestigious tournament that she's in and she, she used to play golf at Madera Golf Course as well. So we're excited about that. Golf has remained strong. You see our rounds in two thousand twenty-one. We're at thirty-six thousand rounds, a little dip. They call, we call it the COVID hangover in two thousand twenty-two, down to thirty-two thousand, then back up to thirty-six thousand in two thousand twenty-three. The thirty-six in two thousand twenty-three really surprised us because two thousand twenty-three was a heavy rain year. We had a lot of weather, especially in the early part of two thousand twenty-three. So early reports that two thousand twenty-four are looking good and our early numbers are looking good for two thousand twenty-four. Our superintendent, Jeremy Jordan, he's done a great job for us. We get compliments consistently on the golf course conditions. We have some of the best greens in the valley. We, we take good care of the golf course. And just like any other business in California, the biggest challenge is human resources and keeping people employed. We hire a lot of local people. Right now, with the new, I call it the new minimum wage, but the, the twenty dollar an hour at, at fast food places, we're getting all of our employees wanting raises. So we are, we are doing everything we can to keep our employees happy. We need them. And continue to find ways to incentivize our employees and keep them going because we truly need them. In two thousand twenty-three, we had an excessive rainfall year, which translated to snowpack in the Sierras. This was a gift for all of us, like you just heard from Keith's report. That enabled us to get groundwater for the entire season last year. Kept us from turning our wells on throughout the whole season. So that was one of the best things that happened. It doesn't save us a lot of money. We still pay for that groundwater to M I D. We have to pay. But it's a little bit cheaper than pumping it out of the ground. But the big thing is, is we save on wear and tear on our pumps and on our wells out at the golf course. So anytime we can keep the wells off and use groundwater, we certainly do. Also in two thousand twenty-three, we had the USGA visit the golf course and give recommendations on playability and turf health. One of our major issues that came up in that report was weed infestation and what we call noxious weeds in the fairways. So we tripled our budget for weed eradication. And we've done our third pre-emergent. So we tripled our budget for weed eradication and we've done our third pre-emergent this spring. Springtime is when you put it down. We've just completed our third application to mitigate those issues with the weed infestation. As always, this time of year, we start thinking about water, that's on everybody's mind. Are, we don't have an allocation yet from MID. Our early indication is that we're going to get groundwater this year. We just don't know what it's going to cost or how much of it we're going to get. But the snow, the snow survey came out yesterday and we're at 110% of normal. So we have every indication, every reason to believe we're going to get groundwater throughout 2024. So we're pretty happy about that.
And just, I'm sorry, Dan, you mean surface water?
Did I say groundwater?
Yeah.
Yeah, surface water, yeah. We, every indication is we're going to get surface water from MID for 2024. Food and beverage? I'm behind on slides, aren't I? Food and beverage, so we entered into an agreement with Sugar Pine Smokehouse. Many of you know, they lost their building when In-N-Out came in. Very popular, local group, they needed a home, we had a home for them. So we came to an agreement with Sugar Pine to sublease the restaurant portion of the operation. It's been great for us, we see a lot of new faces out there, not just golfers, but, but their customers that have come out to, to enjoy their food and beverage and maybe hit a bucket of balls or do some putting around. So we're very happy to have them, they've invested time and money into the facility as well. They've been a great partner for us and we look forward to seeing them succeed at Madera with all of the residents and guests. One, while we were negotiating the agreement, there was a lot of talk about the restrooms in the clubhouse and really any deficiencies that the golf course would have always came back to the restrooms in the clubhouse. In meeting with the new advisory committee, we've had several meetings and those meetings have all been about the restrooms in the clubhouse. So in June 1st of 2023, excuse me, July 1st of 23, we funded the capital account for $75,000, 50 of which came from the golf course and 25,000 came from the city. So that money is in reserve on April 22nd, I believe, is our next greens committee, greens advisory. 15th, anyway, I'll have a quote to do the men's room, a remodel of the men's room in the clubhouse. The plan is to do that with this year's, excuse me, with the 2023, 22, 20, the current fiscal year's funds that we have in there to do that. And then right after we finish that, we want to finish it right around July 1st. We will fund next year's capital and roll right into the ladies restroom and do them both. You're going to ask why do the men's first?
Yes.
It's worse than the ladies.
It's used.
Ladies use it more than.
We saw pictures.
Did you go in the men's room?
I didn't, but they sent the pictures in.
But that's not cast and sewn, if we have to do the ladies first, we can. I'll let the advisory committee and you can talk to Councilman Rodriguez, he's on that committee. So we're going to get those done this year. Hopefully by the end of July, they will both be done. And then at that time, whatever capital funds are left over, we'll go back to the advisory committee and see where, where we want to go. But those bathrooms were on everybody's list, not just the council, but the city as well as the advisory committee. For 2024, we've got some, some good events coming up. One of them, a farm show that we're going to have on the driving range, Sugar Pine Smokehouse, put that together. We're going to close the driving range for a couple of days and bring in ag people from around California and have our own little farm show right out on the driving range and provide food and beverage and banquet services and a golf tournament at the golf course. The remodel of the restrooms is big for us this year. And after that, it seems like the, the consensus is HVAC in the clubhouse is a big, a big component, and that's probably where remaining capital will be pushed. And also we'll have another site visit from the USGA, we'll be coming out to give their site visit and see how we did last year. Other than that, I think it goes back to you, Joe. Any questions?
We'll do public comment first. So just to follow up on what Dan said, actually, we've made a lot of progress since we actually negotiated the agreement. So, you know, coming into this cold, I don't golf, so I, this is a learning curve for myself. I don't think my boss golfs either, so it's a learning curve for him as well. But I think we had a lot of things that we accomplished. Some of the things that we did, we did kick off the advisory committee, so that's working. We had an employee appreciation day. We've got, actually have a financial support where we have a revenue stream where we actually can address some of the issues that need to be addressed, like the restrooms and other things. We've actually done a good job at debt reduction now, so we actually, the next thing is actually we own the golf course now, which is a huge win for, for us. So actually, we're doing well, real well, and I think we have a real good working relationship with SGM. As we move forward, one of the things that we do, I do have a line of sight on and moving forward is that we do need to kind of summarize our contract and we have nine amendments and it needs to be just one, one concise document. There's a couple of areas that the, the agreement is silent on that we need to address. So I think that's something that, that's on the horizon. The, one of the things we do have planned is a Fourth of July golf tournament, as we did last year. And we're actually going to redo, like we did last year, which is a city hosted fishing derby, which was our biggest event of the year for some reason. I, fishermen, fishermen came out of the woodwork to do that. So we're spending a lot of time talking about doing that again.
Good.
Other than that, this is an informational report only to give you a status of where we're at. I know there was a lot of questions about the restroom, I think Dan addressed those tonight. And so that, I mean, that, that's a big darn deal. So again, with that, I'll open up the questions for myself or either Dan.
Thank you very much, both of you for that. Do we have any members of the public wishing to address the restrooms at the golf course? Do we have any written comments or on Zoom, ups out there?
We do not have.
Thank you very much, we'll close the public comment. An avid golfer, Councilmember Rodriguez.
Thank you, Mayor Garcia. And thank you, Dan, for providing us the update as far as Sierra Golf Management. So thank you for giving us the update also on the city's end. So I guess the question that I have is, since the formation of this advisory, I understood that we would have part of the advisory to also try to get a workshop going to seek direction from the council. Not sure if this is a component to that now, or is that something in the future that we're looking to do? There was a letter that was sent out and I'm not sure if the city council, or at least it was a draft letter and from the advisory at least stating what are some of the, the concerns that the advisory had, had brought up. Again, a lot of them allude to what Mr. Bachi had brought up with regard, respects to the restroom and what have you. But there was other issues also that, that I didn't hear today. So I wanted to make sure that I'm clear on how the advisory takes a role here and how we, it can provide any, any direction, or not direction, but at least advise them as what's taking place in the council to seek direction from city council. So I wasn't sure if that was part of today's meeting or not. I know that last time I had requested it and that would come up on the annual report that, that's given to the city council. But my understanding, at least in the last meeting that we, we were at the advisory was that they wanted to present and we had selected a spokesperson to come out and present that to the city council.
So I, I know some of the discussions were about a workshop with the city attorney and I know we had intense discussions about that and I know that was a non-starter because of costs. And so I think the recommendation was to have the advisory committee put in writing what, what the concerns were. And I think we tried to do a job of addressing some of those concerns. I don't know that we have addressed all of them, but again, I think that, that's still open. I don't know that we have, I guess, what do you call it? Operating procedures for the advisory committee. I don't know that any other advisory committee comes to, to looking for council direction. That's why we have meeting minutes for the council to address. So I'm not sure we're, we're in a total alignment about that. So we're, we're trying to address the things that were in the letter that was, was drafted and was presented to council. I think we, you know, I think that's where we're at. I mean, if there's, there's direction to have a workshop, then we're open to do that. But I don't know that we have any other advisory committee in the city that comes to the council and, and asks for direction. So that, that's, that's where my concern is.
Yeah, and the, the purpose of the advisory is to advise. But I mean, so if we're not advising, then what are we doing? One of the concerns, I think the bigger concerns is, again, it comes down to the lease, right? And, and one of the, in the letter, and I'll just briefly read it here. It says that the golf course advisory committee has reviewed the 2009 lease. Again, this is from a historical perspective, which created the committee and has obtained a limited understanding of what, what's believed to be the city council's directives, including in the Ninth Amendment, which says the city has a desire to provide the highest level of service to the community of Madera. Again, that being said, the, the, if, if the assets that the city owns are, are starting to deteriorate, at what point does the city then step in and say, hey, these HVAC units, the, the, the restrooms and what have you? I mean, these have been part of the ongoing amendments and they have to be addressed at some point. And because it's a city-owned property, you know, I think the advisory's concern was, well, who's, who's going to take care of that? We've paid for this asset now, we own the asset, there's revenue coming in. Is the city or does this council wish to continue to improve the asset so that we have a, a very, how, an asset that's worth the money versus a deteriorating asset that we're just putting Band-Aids on? So I think those were some of the concerns, at least from what I got and, and chairing that committee, is that, you know, there, there's some issues out there that, that need to be addressed. And one of those, of course, being the inspection that was done with the HVACs, the, the ADA priorities, restrooms and what have you, and I know we're addressing them slowly, but that was part of the, the, I thought the, that's why we originated that, that advisory committee is to advise the council. If, if I'm mistaken in the way that, that process go, then, I mean, I, I haven't seen any of that come through council yet. I mean, there was a draft letter, I'm not sure if the council members received that draft letter and if there was ever going to be any interaction and a workshop. So that, those are my comments here, I'm not sure if the, if that was a desire of this council.
If I may, Mayor, so the letter that was, and that was prepared by the golf course ad hoc was presented to the city council, if I recall, two meetings ago. If memory serves me, I don't believe it was the last meeting, right, Joe?
No, it was said to be the meeting for less.
It was two meetings ago. Staff is amenable in, in any direction that council would like to go. There's, and there's various options here. One is that the, there are projects moving forward, going back to what Councilmember Rodriguez said. I think one of the challenges with the golf course is the city's had debt, the city has been paying that debt since the golf course was built in the early 90s. That debt was retired in November. I think it, it would have been challenging for the city to allocate additional funding on top of paying off the debt. It, it was a lot of money. Now, now that that debt has been retired, I think the focus has, has shifted a little bit to can we make improvements? Because as we know, the clubhouse is not in great shape, it's, it's not deplorable, but it's not great either. And, and, and if additional funding or if additional investments are not made, I think it's, it's, it's going to only worsen. And going back to what Dan said, there's going to be $150,000 invested in the next couple of months. It sounds like, if I heard the timing correctly, so by July, there's going to be $150,000 allocated to the two bathrooms, which is a great start, not enough probably, but a great start. In terms of the role of the ad hoc or, or the golf course committee, Councilmember Rodriguez and Joe are both correct in stating that when it was established, it was to, to identify issues and to bring those issues to council. Historically, SGM has, came before a council every April and we've provided an update. But knowing that the city, quite frankly, couldn't put additional funding in there without sacrificing something else. And that's always through the budget process, which is challenging. So I say all of that to, to state that, that, that a city staff, and I think this council and the community acknowledges that the golf course is not in the best condition. I think we have a plan in place. I think right now, the question that Councilmember Rodriguez is, is inquiring about is what's the role of the ad hoc? And what's the relationship between the, I'm calling it the ad hoc, rather, the golf course committee and the city council? And hopefully I'm capturing that correctly.
No, you are, and more, more importantly is, I mean, we serve as an advisory. We're, we're not asked, we're not making any decisions, what have you. We're, we're just providing advice to the council so that they're aware of what's taking place out there and what is a priority. And I think Dan did a good job of explaining that, but that's been of a priority since the lease started back in 2009. And at some point, we have to take some action to be able to make sure that we preserve the assets. We have HVACs out there that are failing. Is that a city responsibility for that asset or is that a, a tenant responsibility? And that's where I think some of the advisory had, had reservations about the lease in itself. It's not, it's very vague and who's responsible for what and what type of lease it is. So I think that was a, a something of importance that we needed to make sure we, we, we hammered out. And, and again, it, it's an advisory role. You know, it puts me in a really bad predicament because I'm also, I sit on the council, so it's almost a conflict for me to, to know that, hey, there are some issues that are out there. I'm chairing that advisory, listening to my colleagues and this is what I'm hearing. I'm, I may not be hearing it from every single one, but the majority is saying, hey, let's, let's do what the lease has to do. Let's provide this asset as the best use for the city of Madera. And right now, I mean, based on the comments that we heard, there, there's some failing infrastructure out there, at least some deferred maintenance out there that's creating that asset to devalue. And that, and that's something that we have to preserve as, as a city-owned asset. That's just my take on it, that's just on, on the, on the small end of it. But, but again, you know, I think for me as a, as a council member, just, I'm playing two hats here and, and it puts me in a really tough predicament. Because on one end, I wanted to make sure that that advisory brought this to the council for direction. It looks like we did, we just brought a report, these are the things that we're doing, but there's bigger issues that exist out there as well, bottom line.
Mayor Protem Gallegos?
Thank you, Mayor Garcia. Thank you for that insight, Councilman Rodriguez. We've been on this council the longest and this has been something that's been deferred for many years. We've seen it for, I've seen it for eight years. We've been cleaning up our wells in the city that have been down. We've been cleaning up playgrounds that have had deferred maintenance. We have a fire station that hasn't been built in 40 years. We've had police cars that are breaking down, they're forever old. So it's something that our predecessors have left us with a lot of, of heavy shoulders to have burdened this unfortunate event happening here at our golf course. But I feel, sitting on this council and seeing it every year, we've had parks directors that have not given us information. We've had parks directors who have not followed through on information that the council members had said, we want to see this. Why is this? followed through on information that the council members had said, we want to see this. Why is this not happening? And so now we do have an advisory committee that we've talked about for years in place. We've got reports from Dan's coming in. We have a parks director here, Director Abir, that's giving us information and we've have communications now. We're collaborating and things are moving. As an elected and as a council member, I feel that we need to sit back and and let staff do their job. And 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 as a representative of that committee, Councilman Rodriguez, if there's concerns, I think that's something that you could come back and share with us, just like if you're on the MCTC, we share, if you're on Arts Authority, you know, commission, you share, if you're on the San Joaquin Trail Commission, you share and but I just look at all the mess that we've seen year after year and finally, somebody's listening. Finally, we have people on this advisory board that have our eyes and ears that are making changes. But just like we have issues and our city manager takes care of them, but and and a lot of us sit on different advisory boards that are city managers on, but still, we have to step back as elected, even though we are still responsible for that. The community comes after us when those bathrooms are a mess. When I'm advanced, they're coming to me. That's when I'm eating at Sugar Pine Smokehouse, they're coming to me. So I totally get it. I live it everywhere I go when I'm at the golf course. But they are seeing changes. They are seeing movement. And I think we have somebody here in in the seat, our city manager and our parks director and Dan with those relationships now that want to move forward and are making a difference. And with it being paid off, we have directed more funds into that facility to make it better. So those are my comments and that's how I feel. Thank you for working together and getting the advisory committee and listening. But if it's an issue that needs to come to council, I think our representatives should bring it. And then we should have conversations and put it on the agenda or something like that. And those are my comments, Mayor. Thank you.
Councilmember Rodriguez.
Ah, yes, thank you, Mayor. And again, I'll say this again, because I think this is what puts me in a really tough predicament is that I sit on the advisory, but I'm also a council member. And, you know, I've sat back since 2016. I've been sitting back and had not been for the grand jury providing us a recommendations and a report. I don't know that we would have this year. This is why we had to clean up a lot of the stuff on that on that lease is because of that. So I've been sitting back. It's eight years. And I think it's time that we take action on on a very you know, prestigious asset that we have out there. And I think it's important that we start at least looking at that now that this this asset has been paid off. We have several, some money there that we can allocate to preserve some of those assets. The more you, the more you continue to defer that, again, not knowing who's responsible for what, then you have an asset that's that's just going, it's depleting by the minute. So it's important to attain that. We may be able to put Band-Aids on it. Yes, you're right. But by putting Band-Aids, it's not fixing the problem. And that's why I think it's important that, you know, I address this now because it's part of what the advisory had suggested. So again, it puts me in a in a predicament where now that I've heard it, I have to bring it back to my colleagues and I'm reporting to you and letting you know, this is the issues that are facing out there. And I appreciate the fact that staff has stepped up. Yes, I appreciate that. I appreciate all Director Abir's efforts in trying to make this happen. As he said, he's new to golf, city manager, new to golf. The person that's providing us the information for the golf course is your golf management. I'm giving you the report as an advisory and as a council member, telling you what the issues are there. So I appreciate staff recommendations, but again, I see it there. I've been there. I hear it from the people. So it's important for me to to at least give you that report so that you understand and hopefully we can get some type of direction when it comes to the deferred maintenance that's out there. I think we've all seen it. When you go to those restrooms, we've just been putting Band-Aids on it. Those are my comments.
Councilmember Montes.
I guess I'm just curious. I'm failing to understand exactly. I don't want to say what's going on. I mean, I understand that there's items that need to be repaired. Sounds like there's $50,000 in an account for capital improvements, which I think this would qualify for.
A little over 70.
And so it's over 70.
We have a line of sight and a plan and approach.
And in the past, how did we expend those funds? Did that?
We didn't have those funds.
We never had those funds?
So can just point to clarification. So historically, so prior to the Ninth Amendment that the council approved, April of last year, if memory serves me, the city did not contribute to capital funds, rather, how we would work is that SGM was required to do capital improvements. SGM would 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 make improvements and those receipts would be submitted to the city for approval. Do I have that correct, Dan?
And that was that was capped, right?
And that was capped at at $50,000 a year. During COVID, it was dropped. It's it the process has changed, whereas now instead of SGM submitting receipts to the city, the city actually keeps the money and the city reimburses. And I'm looking at Dan right now and Joe, that's that's how I recall.
Money is in the money is in a city account. And when I get the contractor lined up, paid for, then they'll get reimbursed from that account.
So you do. And it's based off of what, at least historically, was based off of what SGM thought was the most important item.
If you could get closer to the mic, because we have to record it. Thank you.
Yeah, there was a lot of discretion by SGM on what to use capital for. And in the new agreement, when council member Gago Rodriguez, it was more, okay, we need to give you money now instead of receipts. We're going to, we're going to fund the capital and then let the committee and or the city or the council, somebody else decide where that money should go.
So that's the concern. And so as I see it with with other commissions, they just make the recommendation and then council just says, okay, go ahead and do it. And so is that something that's different or what's the concern?
I think the Well, if I may, the the concern has been that the discretion, we haven't approved any of those capital improvements. They're at the discretion of SGM. So the improvements don't have to be in the building. They could be out in the course. They're capital improvements. So bunkers, for example, greens and what have you. So a lot of that other deferred maintenance goes on under that nobody, we're not doing it.
Right. But now that's the point of the commission now, right? So the commission has a discretion. So, okay, now it's not just SGM, it's SGM and the rest of the commission, which SGM is part of, under part of. And it, yeah, and then so I'm assuming you guys take votes as well. So, I mean,
And if I may, I started this conversation out by saying we needed to. There were things that were silent in the agreement that need to be addressed. That is one of the items that I was referring to, even though I didn't mention it specifically. But that's what, you know, one of the things we just need to tighten up, you know, what what actually is the process? Who's responsible for for what? There's some things that are might be capital improvements. There are things that just might be city thing, city-owned property that we need to address. And it's kind of silent on that, but we knew that going in when we negotiated this agreement. I mean, we didn't have anything. And so we were looking to put something in place with the idea that, yes, we would have to fix this later. And so we're now at that point where we're later. That's why we're having this discussion.
Okay, that and I think the the age of the facility, you know, now it's 30 years old and you've got bathrooms that are original. Those are the original bathrooms.
I thought you said we paid it off and I was buying, get a new one.
But, you know, the age of the facility is, you know, 30 years and you know, there are things that that, you know, a small capital improvement might not cover, you know, maybe it needs to be larger. And I think that's what Jose is talking about. What's the real, you know, we know where we're at right now. We know we have 75,000 a year. That's what we have. Is that enough? Not enough? How long will it take?
Probably not. So what's the process to figuring out, you know, what the damage is going to be?
I think that's correct me if I'm wrong, Councilman, but that's kind of where the the advisory committee is looking at. You know, hey, we need this, we need that. The USGA recommends, you know, irrigation system. You know, the pump stations are original. You know, we've replaced motors, we've replaced pumps, lines everywhere, but the the original pump station is sitting right there.
Okay, so it does sound like it's going to be a lot of items and that and maybe it would be something that has a presentation after, because it doesn't sound like everything has been identified or has it?
Trying to work within the context of the money that we have. I mean, and the real question is, do you want to fix everything all at once? And that you don't have the money for? Or do you want to just work within the confines of the money that you have?
That's actually what I'll go.
No, 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 no. So that's the thing. I would say, though, there there are monies there and say, we'll fix what we can with that. And and the commission can make the determination on what's most pressing. And then if something else is needed, then that could come back to council.
Sure.
One at a time.
Yeah. Council can say, okay, yea or nay.
So, I mean, we identified that the number one priority is the restroom. So we got a line of sight on how we're going to address that. You know, anything over and above that, you know, we need money.
Right.
We're trying to, we're trying to spend the money wisely, you know, it's not like it's, first of all, it's not a whole lot of money, number one. Number two, we want to spread it as far as we can spread it and get as much bang for the buck.
Yeah, no, and again, that's why we have the commission. We trust what the commission is saying, but also seeing that the council member that's on the commission is recommending that workshop or presentation be brought to council. I mean, I'd be I'd be in favor of that as well.
We're going to have to, anyway.
Yeah, sounds like, or else we're going to get a big wish list, right? Is everything on there?
I can start writing.
All right. So that was good. Mayor Proten, were you part of the commission? You were part of the ad hoc and it was council member Rodriguez. Is that the vote you go around? Okay, so go ahead.
Thank you, Mayor. So question, just to just to verify, the restrooms have been on the list for a while. And that was part of the agreement when we signed, was it not? To to do the restroom with the funding that we have already?
No, we funded that in July of last year.
Right.
And that was our first thing to go after. So
Okay, right.
Been, we've been kicking the can going, okay, are we going to do it? What are we going to do?
So that's already been on the list. So what Councilman Rodriguez is talking about, like bunkers and other things that are on the list. Why couldn't it just come to council like on a budget item list of things that are going to be needed at the golf course? And this year, we're going to be able to fund this, like wastewater treatment plant. We have a list of wastewater treatment plant, another facility that is has deferred maintenance. And it's listed on the things of most importance. What needs to get done with this year's budget? And if we have extra funding that can be moved into from a reserve account or whatever, we can fund this, this and this, budget items. So it's black and white for the council to see. And that's something that you would work with the advisory committee and with both of you and the city manager to decide what would be listed on that for next year's budget. And if there is that money and you and we decide as a council to put an additional, maybe 50,000 in your budget for that line item, then maybe you can do maybe five, six and seven on top of it. But that's what I would think that would be best for this council and for our staff. That's just an idea. That's all, Mayor.
Councilmember Rodriguez.
Ah, yes, thank you. So, you know, I wanted to make an example of what you said there, Dan, because I think you're absolutely right. 30 years ago, the the city of Madera went ahead and bonded for for this municipal golf course or even longer. And if I was to buy a house 30 years ago and I lived in it for 15 years, but then after 15 years, I decided to rent it out, at some point, the roof is going to be gone, the AC is going to be gone. There's going to be deferred maintenance. Problem here is that I'm not talking about a house. We're talking about something a lot bigger. It's an actual golf course and a club that that's an asset to the city. So there's going to be, there's, how many HVACs do they have? Eight, seven?
Six in the main clubhouse.
And just on a ballpark, those HVACs can go for what? 30,000 maybe or maybe less? I mean, there's no way that $50,000 set aside or 75,000, aside from other capital improvements that need to be done with the bunkers, with the greens and all, is going to be sufficient. So at some point, we have to give direction as to what we want to do with that asset that we have. Do we just allow the 50,000 and try to do it in a small increments? Or do we do it in phases, but the city has to make an investment if they want to preserve that asset? I'm sure that if City Hall was failing at some point, you'd have to make that investment as well. You own that asset out there. And there's a lot of venues. You have an operator. Let's make sure that we're taking care of that as well. That is of a concern that I have and the advisory has expressed. The other concern is the fact that we have this long this long agreement with all these amendments. I know that when we went through it, the just the difference so that people understand is the ad hoc was when council member Gago and I negotiated with, again, city staff and Sierra Golf Management to be able to bring an agreement, again, the Ninth Amendment. Okay, we were trying to make sure that we still had an operator operating that golf course. Sierra Golf Management has done a great job with that. Nothing there. But that lease, it's been extended, extended, amended, extended, amended, that some of those areas in the initial part of the lease are no longer valid in what we do. Another concern that the advisory brought. And that's why I'm making sure that I bring it to you guys, because it's important to understand that we may have to consolidate that and maybe start over again. And that's where legal counsel, we wanted to express that, that maybe that's something we should look at so that we can directly express who is responsible for what in this lease agreement. Is it the city? Again, the owners of the asset or is it the tenant? That's going to be responsible for these big capital expenditures. Again, HVACs, huge stuff that's taken out there. And again, by deferring this, you're allowing other huge impacts on that on that asset to develop. And they will mold, for example, or something else that's happening there. Sidewalks lifting up, ADA issues. So those are the kind of issues that I'm concerned about. And I have to make my voice heard here because now I'm acting as a city council member. As the advisory, if there's going to be a workshop, then I I would like to bring that back someday. Whether or not past practice has happened or not, I'd like to bring that back if the council would agree.
Mayor Proten.
Thank you. Great point, Councilman Rodriguez. And I don't know if city manager, if this is something we would do, is that when we have a facility that is in so disrepair, we bring in a firm to like our fire stations that say, we need to, you need to do this, this and this and this to get it up to code. Maybe that's something that this council needs to put out, not just put it on our advisory and our representative and and our gentleman here is to bring in someone that can lay it all out. This and 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 they would know, they're the professionals that would know, this is what you need to do in this facility. These are the things that have to get done. Now, this is how much it's going to cost. Just like when you buy a home, you bring in Lee Blackstone, who tells you termites, you know, he tells you, you know, you have rot, you have mold or whatever. Maybe that's something that we need for the golf course. That would be our first step of attack. That's what I'm thinking.
If I may, Councilmember Gago, thank you for for saying that. But that was part of the letter that was provided. I'm not sure if that was provided to you guys. We had fire interim fire marshal Matthew Tarr go out there and do an inspection, highlighted that. And that's why the USGA is out there as well. To be able to let us know the condition of the course and what's needed. As Dan alluded to earlier, irrigation is a big issue out there. At some point, we have to address that if we're going to make that a very pristine golf course, at least for the constituents of Madera and or residents and however you want to see it in the golf community. But those are lacking infrastructure, lacking deferred maintenance again. And I don't know that that there's enough money in this capital expenditure to be able to address all those things. But the priorities that I brought up, those were addressed in that letter as well. That was and I didn't know that was delivered to them, but if it's delivered, then they have that as well. But that was something that the advisory wanted to bring before you to seek the direction.
Is it possible, city manager? It's still my time. Councilman Rodriguez just jumped in. Is it possible, city manager, that if the council was to agree to put it on a line item to hire a consulting firm or somebody that goes in and that can line item all the needs that are in code for the facility and for the golf course?
We most definitely can. However, priority doing so, that's definitely going to be a relatively expensive endeavor, which again, if that's council's direction, absolutely. That's that's exactly what we do. With that being said, something that we can then we may want to consider is take two parallel paths right now. One of them is to 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 start the process of consolidating the Ninth Amendment and adding some greater clarity in terms of roles and responsibilities. That's one path. And I think at the same time, we take another path where the committee begins. begins to identify most pressing needs and we identify those numerically in terms of greatest need.
Okay.
And begin to identify some dollar valuation associated with that. If it's the, I'm going to give a couple of examples, and again, I'm not the golfer. But I heard of the irrigation system earlier. I've heard of the clubhouse HVAC units. I'm not a golfer, so I'm going to say the parking lot, because parking lots seem to be beat up. And so to me, I think we we can definitely use the the committee for that. It's not a holistic, it's not 100% every line item. But but it's some of the bigger items that I think we can identify. And I think if we do both at the same time, we come back to council and we have an honest discussion about this is what it's going to take. And if we have some dollars, some value assessed to that, at that point, the city council can provide greater direction in terms of what areas we should identify. And I think that meets the role of the committee. And at the same time, that still gives council the discretion. Does the city have to contribute additional funds above and beyond the 25,000 that it's providing now on top of the 50,000 that SGM provides? So again, it's two parallel paths. I think that we can begin to explore those if that's the direction of council. I think it provides a little bit of clarity in terms of what the role of the committee is and also what the role of council is.
You you, we we already pay the USGA for their annual visits of the actual golf course part. You have a framework there already in place. So your any reports would be more building related and not necessarily the golf course itself. The USGA report kind of covers the golf course, so it would be a little easier.
Okay, thank you, Mayor.
Yeah, so to to your point, Arnaldo, I think you're bringing some clarity to this, which would be able to address both Councilmember Rodriguez as being on the commission and also Mayor Portem, so that we don't over, you know, spend more funds that we could be using. So then we have a viable committee, ad hoc committee. We have the staff and then management working together to identify, then we move forward. Once we have that, then we can come back to the city council and we can make decisions. But right now, we're kind of like, don't have the information necessary. Because, you know, and this regardless of whether or not a person is a golfer. It doesn't matter if a person is a golfer. City council is 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 tasked to assign the the staff to to give us information. And then we make a decision how we're going to do, how we're going to proceed. So as long as we can bring it, if the committee can meet with staff, the staff comes back with the determination and the committee comes back to council, and then we can move forward. And I certainly would not agree to bring in legal counsel at this point, because that can, that's another thing that it would be expensive. Councilmember Rodriguez?
Yes, Mayor, I just want to make sure that we all understand that you do already have a framework for the USGA as far as the golf course. You also have a report from your interim fire marshal telling you certain things. So there is something there to start off with. So we do have that. If we need to bring someone else in there to give us a full inspection, I don't know that the cost would be that great. It wouldn't be as great as you think it'd be because we're not, we're not consulting. We just have an inspector go in there and give us an assessment of the actual building. I don't know that that would cost you thousands of dollars. If anything, I'm talking more in the hundreds. Who knows? I'm not not too sure how inspections go, especially for buildings of that size. As far as the legal goes, it's just to make sure that our current lease agreement is is spelling out and is not as vague as what part of the advisory has already expressed, that it may be very vague because you have so much in there that it may require us to truncate that and make it into one solid lease. So I'm speaking as a council member right now. There are monies that the city now is is generating from this golf course as as a result of paying off the bond. So with those monies, maybe we can appropriate some of those monies and and put that towards the the supplement, what what the capital expenditures that are required to the lease cannot complete. That is my, that is my my biggest priority is that we don't let this continue to defer further out until we get certain reports. We bring this every year and we're doing little things at a time. If we have the availability to do it and the city can do it, because now there's a reserve balance, then let's move on that. Simple as that.
I think I heard both Joe, management from the golf course and Arnaldo commit to tweaking the lease agreement, tightening it up. So I've already heard that. I've also heard that there's plans in place to to fix the infrastructure. So I have faith that we can move forward from this day forward without having to go sideways and go in another direction. So I got a commitment as far as I'm, and correct me if I'm wrong, I have a commitment from you to move forward with the the ad hoc committee to move forward with this.
I I think your commitment would better serve if it came from this body here, whether or not we want to give direction there. That that's where it's better served.
So can I get a thumbs up from the from the members of the council, giving direction to Arnaldo and the staff and the committee to get together and move forward with this?
I I would like to just add if Arnaldo could go back and look at the numbers for what, since we paid it off, what that, I know we had to do 68,000 to the airport, but the money that we have remaining, like Councilman Rodriguez is saying, maybe to use that next month's payment to do some of the deferred maintenance, to look on the budget and where that money is going and if we could just pull it and do some more maintenance on the facility. Is that what you're saying, Councilman Rodriguez?
Correct.
I'm I'm good with that.
Okay, so can what we can do, if this is council's direction, at the next council meeting, we can bring back a report. We can identify funds that have been generated and potential future funds. Again, potential future funds are going to be estimates. And then that's a starting point. Then council can provide direction in terms of should those funds be allocated for capital improvement projects at the golf course.
I'm good with that.
Good with that.
Fair enough. Okay.
Okay, thank you very much, gentlemen. Thank you very much. I had no idea golf was going to take up so much time tonight.
Thanks for hanging in there, Dan.
All right, we will now move on to council member reports and announcements. Mayor Portem?
I know, report. I've said a lot tonight. Thank you.
All right. Councilmember Rodriguez?
Ah, yes, thank you, Member Dan. I know we covered a lot today, but I I did want to just bring up this for a future agenda item. If I could, is Keith did mention something about expiration of certain leases that we have out in these city owned properties. I I I heard seven or eight years. Can we come back and just report maybe, I don't know, a minute item or something to state how how much time we have and how many of these leases we have? I'd like to know at least what we have and how many, what's the timeframe on those leases, if if we could? I'm not sure if that's something that the council would agree on, only because, again, these are city owned properties. And if there's ever anything that we can do to reappropriate that land and do something more for the for the benefit of the community, that that would be something that I'd be interested in. Not sure if the rest of my colleagues would agree to that, but I'd appreciate that. On that note, I just want to say thanks again to all the staff, appreciate all the reports and have a good night. But again, I wasn't sure if we had a
Yes, yes, you did. Yeah. Councilmember Montes?
Oh, it's late. I just want to say again, thanks, Joe. I'm going to go out there and play this weekend. Want to see how far I can go on this thing. No, I'm just kidding. I'll be safe out there. But no, thank you. Nothing else to report.
Thank you very much. Councilwoman Evans?
Everyone have a good night. God bless and see you soon.
Councilwoman Maria?
Thank you, Mayor. We had a wonderful time at the Madera Police Department's Extravaganza this past weekend. It was awesome to see, trying it out with the different ways of organizing it. I feel like the community enjoyed it and it was just a good time. And also, it was great seeing all the kids at the Riverview Playground. That was fun. And that's all.
Councilmember Villegas?
Nothing to report tonight.
Yeah, I do, but I'll save it for later. I'll save it for another day. We have no closed session items tonight. We will be adjourning this meeting at 9:37. I want to thank everyone for being here. Our next meeting date is May 1st and the second one is in May 15th. Thank you very much and you all have a good night.